So would you all please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Aria, I was just explaining, there's something in front of you for a last minute agenda item.
I saw Kathy's email.
Oh, you did, okay. A couple of us kinda came up with this idea. Turns out it's really low effort and I'd just like to add it to the agenda for discussion, I guess.
Bike ped was left.
Yes. So we have bike ped. Are they ready for the agenda tonight?
What?
Bike ped is okay for the agenda tonight, right? The email we got from Joe.
Uh, yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, does everybody have that?
So bike ped, the event, is there anything else to add to tonight?
So, uh, discussion of the revised contract?
That, everything that, all the other, the other items from last week were just put at Joe's advice under administrative items, so that's all folded into that.
Right, but we had a follow-up email saying we could separate them out.
Oh, then, okay, then sure, that's fine.
I think we should. Especially because bus shelters are not administrative business.
Okay. So what else needs to be added?
Nor is the revised contract, nor is the Grove.
Well, look, I'm not, look, I'm not gonna say this, that's Joe, he's sitting right there.
I know, and we got an email from him. We're, I, I'm not asking a question, I'm telling you.
Was there one after? Was there, there was one after? The one who said, they just lump all those into administrative business?
No, well, no, it was the email that I sent that I, the, the big email yesterday,
Right.
where I ju- I simply stated that I thought the items could be added to the agenda as separate individuals.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
So I think what the board members are saying is, let's add them now as individual items. So we had revised contract, the bus shelters, uh, Grove Street, well, I guess Grove Street Park.
Yeah, we do Grove Street.
Is that resolved or is that need discussion?
Well, we're gonna have to rescind the motion and then.
It needs to be discussed to do something else like that.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
And then the voicemail.
The agenda. You know, the agenda issue was on the list, but is that resolved now? I mean, wasn't it, wasn't it one of the things or am I wrong?
So the agenda itself is on the agenda.
Right, but I think, but I think we're past, I just wanna.
We're definitely not past it, but, but the, it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda to begin with.
And what else? I have, I'm sorry, let me, I make sure that I have everything. Bike ped, the Hasbrook event, revised Grove Street agenda.
Bus shelters. Website.
That's the revised.
Yeah, it's revised.
It's revised.
And then.
And what was the other one? Was there another one?
Do we have voicemail on there?
Yeah, bus shelters, then. That's our item.
Uh, wait here, I got the, let's hold up. Parkers Base on Grove, voicemail revised, uh, department head reports. Is that just, that was just a request though, that doesn't have to be discussed tonight, correct?
I think some people wanted to talk about it.
You want to discuss it, okay, so, and then discussion.
Well, no, let, have, is that, does anyone wanna talk about department heads? Rather than presume that someone wants to talk about that.
Department head reports?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I thought it was Sarah and Honest issue.
Yeah, I'd rather hear from people directly that wanna talk about it rather than guess.
Yep.
Uh, anything else?
That's it.
Just, I, if there's anything we have to do with that.
Oh, and then.
Not yet, no.
So I just pulled that back.
We're gonna wait for their official minutes to be approved.
Okay.
For that, for the planning board.
Are we doing something with the, the bike?
I think, actually ask Joe, um, show, show him the.
Joe, do we have to take any action on any of these items? We don't have the actual recommendation from the planning board itself, we have the attorney's recommendations.
I think they intend this.
That, at last night's planning board meeting, they're, they're gonna basically be recommending we adopt all of them
Right.
and referencing that memo, so do we need to wait?
Oh, good, then I'll, let's wait. And the reason I say that is, by the thirtieth, their time to comment will expire anyway.
Yeah, that's why.
But also, I like that better because.
Cause George has some comments too.
Right, and if they're gonna recommend to adopt it, then that's a cleaner memo.
With George's recommendation.
Yeah.
But by the thirtieth of what? December? We don't have a meeting.
Of December. I know.
That means we can hit the ground running in.
In January.
January nine.
The point is if they send a, if they send on a memo, uh, under their own letterhead, then that'll be our recommendation, you'll be ready to act, and if they don't, then you'll be ready to act anyway, because the forty-five days will expire from the date of referral.
Um, and December thirtieth is the forty-five days from the planning board.
That's from when they got their referral.
Okay, but we, and we didn't hear anything back from the county, right?
They have forty-five days.
Okay.
And I, no, they have thirty, and I think they're.
The county has thirty days.
Oh, it's two million, right?
The village planning board has forty-five.
And the village planning board, I did send out to everyone.
Right, oh, I see, yeah, no, I have it up right here. No, thank you, Katie.
While we're on that one, um, so George Rodenhausen had, uh, some comments on the fracking language, not the concept. If we make those changes, or some of those changes, can we do that without having to have more hearings and all of that?
Yes. And I'll put that in writing when I see their recommendation, or if I don't, prior to your next meeting.
Okay.
I do not consider any of the changes that, first of all, I'll tell you, I don't consider any of George's recommendations to be out of line, in other words, they are reasonable, you can make them or not make them, and I think you'd be fine legally.
They seem to be fair.
Um, and I also think that, um, they do not represent a significant change, uh, that would require further public hearing, so I think you're, you're, you'll be ready to go at your next meeting.
Do you want me to move the agenda?
Wait, hold on. Wait, 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 um, do you, do you wanna do something with this bike ped letter?
That's, I got that on the list.
Oh, that is on, okay.
The other thing is the interim zoning law, um, and I was just wondering on the dates on that, if we know offhand when it was sent.
The, the moratorium?
Yes.
That, well, it was, that was just this last night at the planning board as well. George Rodenhausen, there has some comments.
Right, I know, I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, you mean after that statement?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering about the, the dates of expiration in terms of the timing, yeah.
Time, time.
As per my conversation with Kurt, he sent, he decided to send them out to the county himself.
Okay.
Um, and he would have been, he did that after our last meeting, so the thirteenth.
Okay, so, so basically, um, basically both of these things have to wait till next year, essentially.
Till January, I think.
Okay. All right. I mean, I want, I want their comments as part of the public records, so it's not, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. It also helps to make both unassailable.
Right, exactly, well, it's best, I mean, I want them personally, and I also want them for that reason, yeah.
I do, I'm looking at them right now.
I have them too, do you wanna come?
So Joe, uh, you were, and I don't know if you're here, but this doesn't make sense. We did, we're about to have a consent, uh, discussion on the consent agenda, it's something that Stuart had, there's some board you want to did that, I thought you said, right?
Yeah, well, among others, Orange County, uh, who's this? Chamber of Commerce, Orange County, does a consent agenda on their board, where they might have thirty routine items. They send it out ahead of time, and if someone wants to talk about it, they can. Otherwise, they usually have the consent agenda up, they approve it as one motion, and then they usually have two or three items of major discussion at the meeting that they take the time.
So I am gonna, I guess, just remove an improvement of consent agenda, cause there is one, um,
Change.
one change we need, so clear cover of that.
Or is it the consent agenda?
It's, it's on the main one, it's written consensus agenda, they're bullet point down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And easily, it's called, I think, consent.
Consent.
Consent. But I mean, you call whatever you want.
And don't we have to approve the lowest bid order, is that automatic?
No. We can't, we don't have to approve the lowest qualified bids anything.
Right.
Um, so we have some flexibility, but let's, I wanna make sure that we're, nothing's lost. Anything else for the agenda?
No.
Let, let me just read the last one, just to make sure there's nothing forgotten. Bike ped, uh, the, the, uh, fire thing, revised slash website, Grove Street, agenda, uh, bus shelters, voicemail, department reports, and then moving the minutes from the consent agenda to discussion.
I'll move the agenda.
Anything else? I'll second any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, who's here? Leonard, Elizabeth, Jeff, any comments?
Yes.
Please, then.
Good evening. My name's Leonard Loza, I live at eleven North Oakwood Terrace. On August fifteenth, I went to the village to ask for some information under the Freedom of Information Act. This is my application. I had made nine calls to the village. The fifth call, I was told, needed to be referred to the attorney. I'm still waiting.
Actually, we did have a discussion, and I, the discussion from the attorney was that after I'd spent hours poring through minutes books, that because the information was not in a consent, in a, in a consec-, I'm saying this wrong, Joe, a consens-, uh, consecutive place, we couldn't just refer the information.
I asked for copies of it. I, I, right here on the bottom, I asked for specific things with dates on the properties for the locations. And I don't understand, is the copies of all of the minutes of the planning board are available online? The ZBA is not. If the ZBA's was online, none of us would be standing here right now. So I don't understand how the planning board gets online and the ZBA doesn't.
Sorry, just reading what you have here, Leonard.
Okay.
Well, Katie and Joe, you're familiar with this?
Yeah. I remember, I know, what, what Katie's talking about is that the Freedom of Information Law does not require us to create a record that's not ordinarily kept, in other words, it, it, like a request like all variances in the Village of New Paltz for the last six years.
No, it says a copy of all area and density variances.
Right.
Aside from the fact that I spelled variance is wrong. But in either case. But I received no correspondence, nothing, nothing in writing, not a phone call.
That's not true, Mr. Loza, you and I.
No, you told me you were working on it, and you had to refer it to the attorney, and that's as far as it went. The law requires you to give me ten days notice. I mean, I spoke to Bob Friedman on Open Government. The next step is to take an action on my part. And the actions cost you money, they cost me money, and I'm hoping that we can come to some kind of an agreement.
Mm-hmm, I would do whatever the attorney.
I'll contact you tomorrow.
Is there a reason where, why he hasn't, Leonard hasn't gotten the records he's asked for? Honestly, is there, I mean, is there?
I, I went through, Jason, I went through all of the minutes, looking for the information that Mr. Loza.
Does it exist?
I don't think that it does, and I referred it to.
That's why, that's why I'm asking.
And I referred it to Joe because I couldn't.
The, the issue is that if the, if the record doesn't exist in the form it's requested, the Freedom of Information Law doesn't require you to create it, it doesn't require you to go, so, for instance, if there's not, if there's not a file that exists that, 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 um, uh, that has in it all density area variances, you're not required to go through every record in the last six years and then read everything and find out if there, if there, if it was an area variance.
So for, so for number three then, copy of minutes and decision of property location variance for, and it states out three specific, specific properties. That's just minutes and a decision.
Oh, but specific me-, uh, meeting.
It, yeah, but you'd have to search that property through every set of minutes. In other words, the building, we, we, we looked, right, the building department doesn't, doesn't have like, you know, with that address or record that will show any history, and so again, it requires you to go through every set of minutes just looking for that property address.
If there's a variance, wouldn't it be filed with the section law and block of the properties?
That's not what I.
Yeah, but I don't think it was, right?
There, there are twelve meetings a month of a ZBA.
No, a year.
A year.
Thank you, Leonard, I love you dearly, I'm not going to be there twelve times a month.
Certainly with the permission, with the permission of the board and the village attorney, I would be happy to, um, we have discs down in the office, I would be happy to transfer any disc that's in electronic format at all minutes, and let Mr. Loza.
Well, just let me look at the books then, I mean, I, if I'm allowed to do that.
You're, you're, you're entitled to a response,
Yeah.
to be sure, and I will contact you tomorrow, and I'll tell you exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and I know that, you know, Carol, like, when Carol was the clerk, I mean, Rachel Lagatka has told me that she would ask for things that were not just, you know, that were like this, where we had to look through it, and what Carol would do is invite her to come into Village Hall and look through the records, so.
Yeah, come in on a rainy day.
So just for future reference, that's, that's the way that.
Rainy, snowy day, not a problem.
Yeah, that's, that's the way that we should handle it, yeah, the village should have gotten a response.
I've just seen enough for future reference, I believe, and you can find the village code online, but check this. But in the village code, there's a section, I believe this is, that all public records are available to review by the public within a certain number of hours notice.
Okay.
But it has to be supervised, some could be originals, all that kind of stuff, you never know. But, um, it might be useful in the near future. I think that might actually be building department records only, I'm not sure. But maybe all village.
Just cause there's some confidential thing.
Yeah, it could, yeah, it could just keep that in the specific.
I, I do have a question though, regarding this, not necessarily for you, but kind of just to pose it out there. If we had more digitized records, this could be done.
Oh, searchable records is the answer to everything, right?
Okay, that's, that's the crux of what our issue.
Well, I guess, in, in order to end this dilemma that I'm in for future,
You're talking my language.
if the ZBA minutes could be online as the planning board minutes are online,
Right.
that, nobody would be, nobody would be asking.
We've also, we have been having issues with our website, hopefully they'll be either clarified tonight or.
No, the planning board was fine, I went through much of that.
Well, I mean, we've been having, even putting our own documents, but zoning boards should all be there, all the minutes should be there, there's no question about it, so hopefully.
Do you have to manually type them or do you scan them?
You would, you would scan them. You would, yeah, so unless, unless.
That would be a great project for a college intern.
Yup, you're speaking my language.
Or, or if they're already, like, I mean, if the minutes are done at a, like Katie's doing hers at a laptop now, so they're already digital, then you just copy to a PDF and post it to the website, so. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll get there, and Joe will take care of it.
All right.
I can see.
You will, you will hear from me tomorrow.
I can see that I did do keyword searches in the minutes.
But, but before letting you go, I guess one.
I'm, we're, so, so, one at a time, please talk one at a time.
While I was looking for Mr. Loza's work, I, I did, when I, when I was going back into the digital records that we had, I did do keyword searches, looking for things.
Sure.
We, and I tried multiple different things, I sat down and actually pulled out records and, and books to read things to, and that, and when, when, when I was at a loss for finding what Mr. Loza wanted, I, I went to Joe and said, I can't, and I don't want to give a bad answer, I never wanna give a bad answer.
Sure.
So we, we did try.
Are all the minutes in a book?
Um, I found out today that the planning board minutes, the, the planning board minute book only was updated till June, the deputy clerk is working on that, right? And, I'm sorry, to January of two thousand twelve.
Planning board or ZBA?
The planning board, that's the book she pulled out first.
Okay.
So she's updating the books to make sure she was checking them.
Okay.
But all, by all means, and Mr. Loza, what I can do, if, if the board will allow, I have the discs, I can ask her to quickly pull everything over to a disc, all the minutes, um, over to a disc tomorrow, and you could search them to your heart's content.
Okay, after Christmas.
I, I would be proud of the deputy clerk to do that for you. Is, is that agreeable to the board and to the village attorney?
Yeah. And I'll talk to you tomorrow too, and then we'll make sure we get.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to.
Question two and three.
Yes.
When somebody appeals to the ZBA, they fill out a, a form.
Application, application.
Those forms actually.
An application.
An application.
Yeah, I presume those forms are filed yearly and chronologically. So how difficult would it be to quickly look through seventy-two?
I did not find the forms when I went to look for them. They're, they're not in the, it happens, but.
That would be a wonderful way, if all of those forms, they flip, flip, they're looking for whatever they're looking for.
They should.
Height variance.
Or, or they might be filed by the particular meeting, so it's a meeting on this date and in the folder, it's the agenda and, and all, yeah, but.
Well, that, but that's chronological. That's chronological.
Okay.
And number three, you have a date.
No.
Copy of, that, you're talking about a particular decision.
Correct, I don't have a dates on those.
You don't, do you have any sense?
I don't even know if they exist, to tell you the truth.
What, copies of, but you know there was a decision?
Well, there had to be, based on what's there.
Or, or there, I presume what you're trying to find out, or if there wasn't, that may be an issue, right? That's what you're trying to figure out, right?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so we, that's gonna be the hardest one.
I could go to the property owners, or I could research back through the deeds.
Variance is what we talk.
Deeds wouldn't be in a variant, wouldn't show that in the deed.
No, I wouldn't show in the deeds, but it would show the people that I could talk to, that, I mean, one of them was Ralph the Fever's house, and he's long since dead, so I can't ask him. And one of them is Robert Felton's house, and I could ask him.
Right.
And the other one, the house was just sold and the lady died, but I know her children, so I can ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Sorry for the frustration.
This isn't what you had called me about, though, you wanted to talk about Park Point, so we still want.
Yeah, but I wanna talk about here now.
No, 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 I know, I was just clarifying, that we, that we still needed to have a phone call.
Merry Christmas, Leonard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming down.
Elizabeth or Jeff, anything for public comment?
Uh, not for me, for me, I'm strictly here observing.
And I guess I don't see anything on the agenda for, uh, the town or anything, and, uh, so I'll just thank everyone, and you too, Katie, for a great twenty twelve. And, uh, here's to a twenty thirteen coming up, and everyone have a merry and happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Look at that.
Before we see everyone in twenty thirteen, or if anyone wants to come tomorrow night, we'll be there till one in the morning.
Maybe twenty thirteen will never come, and we don't have to worry about anything anymore.
Exactly.
That's what I'm banking on, Friday.
I have to say, I have very mixed emotions about whether it's the end of the world.
Well, anyone has any good stuff, drop it off at the cheese plate, and we'll hold on to it, and if it's still here, we'll give it back to you.
Yeah, it's a likely story. Take care, Jeff.
Before I have to file my tax.
And.
I'll give them my taxes.
Any announcements by the board? All right. Uh, I move we, uh, approved, oh, the, approved the consent agenda?
Second.
Who's the majority vote?
As a member. Oh. As, uh, all in favor? All right. Um, Joe, do you want to go next? If you, I mean, you gotta stay here till the end for executive session anyway, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, as I considered my list, my whole list is things that would really be, they're either labor or they're litigation related, so it would be executive session.
Okay.
I'm happy to discuss anything you guys wanna ask questions about that's outside that realm, but other than that, I'm here for the duration.
Um, so I guess, is Stuart, who's, 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 Stuart O'Brien is the public access now?
Uh, I'm.
You are, okay, so you wanna bring us up to speed on what we're, on the decision we need or the special?
Uh, this is, this is the, uh, final contract, apparently Don has been trying to get on the agenda for a while, but we keep sending him back, and then there's been issues for him, but he put this forward to us to, uh, pass through, and I do have some emails from him today, I can just pull up super quick.
Joe, you take a look at this, so take it.
Yes, including being involved in some of the early iterations of the document, so.
This is the final recommended with everything in it.
Final countdown.
I'll move it.
Has the town passed the version of it?
I don't know.
Brian, do you know, did the town just pass it?
Uh, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm sure about that. I believe, I believe it's on theirs tomorrow night, I could yell out the window to chat.
I was gonna say, I'll send him a text.
But so, no red flags for you, Joe, then that'll be fine, I'll second it.
No, no.
Any discussion?
What am I asking? Is the town already signed this?
If the town passed it already.
Their, theirs is, if it hasn't changed radically since the first time I looked at it, theirs just had something different about the construction.
And we get money and.
The construction.
Right.
Fund that they want.
We're gonna get equipment, yes.
We're gonna get equipment in the new reiteration of this.
You have that, new, new toys to play with hopefully, for the, for the, the other side of the camera.
They're actually, there's talks of, uh, putting, um, together a studio in the police department, uh, well, not the new police department, the one downstairs, uh, public access studio where we can do like a recording and take down the digital stuff.
Uh, before that, that gets too far along the path, check in with the fire chief, cause
He's gonna.
we gave some initial results, but I don't know if they'd actually take themselves, like, put on, if they use them.
I know he's got the keys, but.
Yeah, so they're gonna, so anyway, if they're not gonna use, might be more space if they, if they end up having.
Will the town own it, right?
Well, I believe the town owns it, as, as far as.
We got Susan permission to use it for overspill.
Yeah.
In writing?
Somewhere, we had it in writing.
Okay.
Or it was Tony, maybe? Um, all right, so, but there's no, uh, did we go on the, no, any discussion, no, all in favor?
No, we haven't. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Um, and the minutes, there was just that one correction.
On the minutes, Katie, I sent it to you, but, and suggested that you check, but you, I don't, did you find it? It is not a moratorium on B three, it is a zoning, it is a, an amendment to the zoning law. Not a moratorium on the B three.
Yes.
Okay. But that was a biggie.
The only, I, the only thing I didn't address was because I knew that they're, at the table I'm frequent, I've, I'm frequently handed additional copies, so I was waiting to see if there are additional copies.
Well, I just checked with, with Jason, and I'm right, it is not a moratorium.
No, I will use the language, not a moratorium.
Everybody understand?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at what you're talking about.
All right, I'll move them as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Aria, may you wanna explain the bike ped to the people watching?
Um, yes, let me just pull it up, and then I will begin to talk about it. Um, well, I can, I can give the background, um.
Do you want the paper, Kathy?
What?
Do you need paper?
Oh, sure. Um, I mean, the, the whole idea behind this is that, um, Bike Ped feels that New York State DOT and their current budget has not, well, their, their recently released, uh, you know, two-year capital plan, basically, does not at all talk about bicycle access, pedestrian access, um, and in light of a recent occurrence, which, in which, uh, you know, on thirty-two North, there's, um, you know, there's a culvert that goes underneath, and they, they, they recently repaired that overpass, um, with bridges, and.
Tributary thirteen, that's due?
Yes, exactly, Tributary thirteen, um, so they recently repaired that, and there, there was talk about expanding the, expanding the road a little bit, widening the shoulder, or just making it more bicycle accessible, so that if the bicycle is on the road, they're not either squish up against that, um, you know, concrete divider, or, you know, just in the road, and, um, Judy May was actually promised that this was going to happen, and then it didn't. Um, and, you know, so, so this was, this is one of the things that, like, is a telltale sign that bicycles, pedestrians are not something that they are making a priority, and then when the budget came out, it was obvious that they really aren't making this a priority, um, and us as a village, um, we obviously do make this a priority, and Bike Ped in particular does make this a priority, so they wanted to, um, you know, basically write this letter and have the village board be on board with it, and have us advocate, um, you know, with this, through that. And, uh, I mean, if anybody has any specific questions, I mean, it kind of just references all the different areas in which, you know, like, uh, complete streets, or, um, you know, transportation alternatives, like, just all the different ways that, you know, New York State has really talked about making this a priority, and then how this is not reflected in the budget.
So, so does someone want to make a motion to send the letter and copy to all outstanding municipalities? I do, but I don't want them to sign that, since it's gonna, it's gonna strain.
I'll move that the mayor, on behalf of the village board, write a letter.
Is there a second?
Uh, well, do we wanna, well, I'll second for purpose of discussion, um.
What's the discussion?
Do we, do we wanna just sign on to their?
Is this, I mean, that's supposed to, is this good enough to cut and paste into, on a letterhead, or do we need, is it important to tailor it?
Um, I mean, I, I don't know, I think it makes.
If the points are getting, they're getting lots of them, and probably they're not gonna read most of them anyway, you know, cover to cover.
Uh, well, I prefer than you, but.
But if we're just going in this mailbag, or, and weigh it, by how many pounds of letters are in it, you know?
Yeah. Right, exactly, um, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, it's, it's asking us to write a letter and, like, regarding this, but maybe we can just use this, um, cause they've approved this as a template for the letter.
Well, except that, New Paltz is attempting to get bike paths on South Park Corners Road when the county redoes it. And much time has been spent around it, but the Transportation and Implementation Committee on this very topic, and, you know, where we fall in the positioning and getting the infrastructure underneath, so that
Oh, yeah.
we can have economic development, and, and places would be interested in locating in that business sector, so I think we ought to specifically reference New Paltz and our two-year-long quest that when the county does redo South Park Corners Road, that bicycle paths which have been planned are in fact funded.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, that's, that is the idea behind here, I don't know, they, I don't, I was gonna say, I don't think it references it.
But it doesn't reference it. No, it doesn't.
Um, okay, so then we should basically use this but add that?
I, I meant, I mean, it's Jason's letter on behalf of us, but I just, he asked, can he cut and paste?
Well, I, I don't remember seeing a, a deadline, is it, is it better to pass this or something real close to it tonight? Or better to take this and, I mean, I don't wanna wait till after the holidays, but if the local letters has no punch, and that, it's still under the deadline, does it make sense to ask Bike Ped to draft one that's tailored to us and we can sign that? Missing all, all of the things, cause they're involved in more than just South Park as well, you know, there's other things that could be referenced if we wanted to go kind of whole hog with what we're doing locally.
Right, right, well, I mean, it definitely, you know, it does, it, it is, I think this is
Their letter. Their letter.
Tailored to New Potts, it just doesn't reference everything that we are working on.
That's, yeah, right.
Well, I have two questions, uh I'm I'm in favor of us sending a letter uh on this concept, but just a couple of things to do. Has the Bike Pet Committee fact-checked everything that's in there about this percentage and that percentage, cause I have no idea if that's true, so assuming they did the research and it's accurate, okay? And the other thing is there about.
I mean, it's all cited.
Well, okay, um and then this part about global warming and climate change, I don't know if that's really relevant here, because you're making, you're accepting that as scientific proof almost with these rest of these things you could do there, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know if that really belongs in this letter.
It is scientific.
No, if we're talking about bikes, let's talk about bikes.
I mean.
Oh, I think it's completely relevant.
Those tie in pretty closely.
Well.
The idea of moving away from motorized transportation and towards non-motorized transportation is directly related to climate change.
Well, so I guess that that's your main reason for biking, to to cause of climate change or?
One of the many, health, climate, yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely. I mean, the, I feel like the the reasons for for biking are endless.
Well, I mean.
Ariana. Brian, you can look at me like that all you want.
Ariana, if you wanna make the point that we want support for bicycle paths in New Potts, especially referencing what I talked about and the transportation committee talked about, I think Stuart makes a very good point, stay focused on it and don't throw everything in but the kitchen sink.
Well, not everyone would agree, I I don't think on that, but I think everyone would agree on the rest of the parts, but I don't necessarily think.
Yeah, I mean. Right. And particularly because we've been trying to get funding.
Well, whatever all we wanna do, I'm fine with, but I I think we should leave it in there.
Uh, yeah, I honestly don't think the content of the letter ma- how letter matters, for reasons, for someone, this is not content, it's volume, it's, you know? The people who are reading it, other than know New Potts, they care, but they think about New Potts versus Monticello for all they care, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, the more municipalities we get involved with it, if we get Hector to do this on the county level, like, you know, if we just, I mean, this is, this is something that.
That's why I think we ought to specifically reference concerns that we have addressed in New Potts, these to be bikes.
Right, well, I think we we should, I think we should add that, but I don't think we should remove anything that they have in here.
I mean, I had on my treasures, I would remove that, I I don't wanna vote against anything though, because I think it's important, so if everyone wants it, then I'll vote to stay in, but I I think
I don't care. I would tip.
I see.
That's not particularly as scientifically proven as the rest.
Oh, just cause they're funding climate deniers, no?
So what's the motion?
Yeah, exactly.
Come on now.
The only, the motion on the table, as I recall since I made it, was to authorize the mayor to send on behalf of the board a letter to the governor regarding the Bike Pet, I made no reference to content other than suggesting that if you wanted to add.
So, dear Andrew, please stop, sincerely, Jason, we're good.
Got it.
Alright, sounds good.
Please stop.
Just please stop, cause it's gonna apply to so many things, it's gonna be my stock.
I always.
Shorter, always more.
Exactly, that one will get read, that's the other thing, everyone will read that one. Um, but no, let's um, would you be willing to, how do you want to amend your motion, so I can clarify what it is that I'm supposed to be sending, I don't wanna have three people expect two different letters to come out of these.
Yeah.
I think we need to add.
The South Park Corners.
Our own specific work on South Park Corners and throughout the community in general, but that is a specific project that we are looking for money to get done.
Right. I mean, we've talked about it on two ninety-nine also, like, you know, by the flats, I mean, and that's on Village, that's.
But we know the county is doing County Route seven.
None of none of this is actually in Village.
Would you, would you be comfortable having the Bike Pet Committee just add language, send us a paragraph, whatever, however?
No.
Let them, let them just.
You didn't, Cookie Monster's over there.
Sally, let me finish my sentence again, you've you've got your mouth full and you're still cutting me off. Finish chewing and then you can just, then you can cut me off.
I'm listening.
Um, I don't think the content letter matters that much, outside the general topic, but it's good, it's always, I mean, one good to put on writing, but also good if this, the Bike Pet Committee wants to, we've asked to be, become experts at this, they're the ones who know everything. So we're gonna add in South Park, just add in every, all the little bells and whistles, cause so that it'll make the letter two pages and then it'll be twice as heavy in the bag as it's long as all the other ones. We're got the real important slides here, um, but I I just don't wanna get, I don't wanna spend too much time going, cause again, it's so unlike the end one, but us is gonna read it.
It's your letter and I move to authorize you to do it.
Alright, fine, I'll just delegate some help to Bill.
Not Bike Pet, but you.
I know, alright, fine, and was that seconded, Katie?
I did say.
It wasn't.
You didn't, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, um, of course, I feel like I'm flipping out.
Like I said, Cookie Monster.
Mm-hmm, alright, so here's the idea for a simple event, a simple village event at dusk on New Year's Day. The um, this is something actually the village used to do, and it was first, thank you, first, that was bigger, um, but Blue told me about this in Kevin McGuire, the fire chief. The village already collects all the Christmas trees in the village, and then we, I can't remember where we bring them, but we bring them somewhere to be chipped and all that, so what we could do instead is have the DPW drop them off in Hasbrook Park. We can have a open fire, uh according to state law, Kathy double-checked it with the DEC, as long as the fire chief says, you know, supervises it. So I asked the chief, the chief and the fire department are on board, they think it's, it sounds like a great, a great event, and um, that's really kind of it, um, we could do more if we've, you've got, you know, we have a tent and some um, those space heaters from restaurants available, so we might get some music if someone wants to play, but simple enough, um, fire in the park, um, we thought dusk on New Year's Day is a simple thing of a few hours, cause keep people gonna be tired from New Year's and kids are gonna need to get to bed and all that, so, um, I'd like permission from the village board for the use of Hasbrook Park during that time. And other than that, there's not, I don't think anything else would be needed.
Does DPW normally work on New Year's Day, or is this like?
They drop it off ahead of time.
Oh, okay, so it'll always be filed there, so.
And actually, what they said too is that they don't think there'll be enough trees for a fire to last long, so there's a bunch of like, um, we're gonna run a bunch of stuff to the wood chipper, but they just take chainsaws to it instead and drop off some other things in the park in case we want other firewood for the bonfire.
Do they need?
And then we can take it out later, wouldn't it?
Do they need help with the chainsawing?
Yes, but I think you need to take the civil service exam and get your certification from worker one, I think.
Well, I chainsawed out west.
It's not Blue, it's Nancy, so the insurance and the the that is gonna suck me.
Oh, I'm sure. Um, alright, so.
But so I think that said, oh, the only, the only other thing is, is we do have, we do have money left in the one twenty-fifth account, so we could, um, if we wanted a band, we could use some of that money, since we weren't having a twenty-fifth event again, to pay for this event, why is that?
One twenty-fifth is not our money.
That was, cause we had, cause we had, we had to give that back to the vendors, but maybe that was for some, another legal reason?
The mini smile. That was because it was promised back.
Okay, well, either either way, it's, we can get someone to play for free if any music, it's not a big deal.
Oh, we would have to ask permission of the one twenty-fifth committee.
Yeah, that's too much of a hassle then, we'll we'll use that, we can sort that out later.
Do you want it to be January first, I mean, is that a?
Well, we were thinking dusk on New Year's Day, cause it was just.
Cause I was thinking the next weekend, when more trees would be down.
But we've already, we will, we'll have already picked up and disposed the village trees, we don't have to move them or keep them there for a week.
I'm just thinking, most people don't take their tree down till after New Year's.
I don't know.
Christians in general, the twelfth day of Christmas, the feast of the epiphany, January sixth.
Feast of the epiphany, nice job, Katie.
Catholic, yeah.
That's exactly right.
I don't know, I don't, I don't have to keep the trees.
I don't know what that is.
It's the day the wise, it's it's the day they celebrate that the wise men got to the major, so that's what the twelve days of Christmas, it's from Christmas Day to January sixth, and most, and a lot of traditional Christian homes take the tree down after.
Take their tree down after.
I always thought the twelve days leading up to Black Christmas.
Do you think there'll be? Yeah.
I grew up with atheist parents, what do you want from me?
I mean, I mean, we think there'll be enough tree, well, the.
I don't think there'll be enough trees till after what Katie is saying.
The twelve days of Christmas is a, was a song that taught Christianity to a community, to a community that was mostly illiterate and had to teach it in secrecy, so it begins on Christmas Day, because the partridge in a pear tree is the Christ child, the tutor does is the new, the old testament, the new testament, and and each thing have each.
Ah.
The song with twelve days of Christmas.
Not just a birthday song?
No.
I was pre-orthodox and I don't know.
That's, if you're pre-orthodox and don't know that, we're all in trouble.
They said words not in understanding, like.
Well, would it be, would it make, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna jump into this.
I'm orthodox, I wish I knew.
That's the thing, could we may, could we look at maybe approving, cause it's not like I don't use the park in January. Either dusk on New Year's Day, that's just like the ring of it, but all, you know, then, or the Saturday, the that Saturday, and just, could we not, we don't meet again, we'll just figure out which is the biggest event.
I, I, I have a question.
And make a call, you know?
They could just stack them in the park.
This is December.
When is the sixth?
Up until. That Monday, is it that Monday?
Yeah, let's leave it be doing.
The Monday, the Monday before, we have our finance meeting.
Monday.
We'll leave it there until.
I mean.
I just wanna leave it there for a week or two.
So, wouldn't it be better to do it Saturday?
Yeah, that's true, man.
You might have more people who'd be more willing to take it down a few days before the feast than than just on New Year's Day, and most people aren't interested in on New Year's and take their tree down.
I agree, I agree with you on that, that was my point.
But that's just my opinion and I, I don't have a role.
I think if we, if we plan to do it on January the twelfth, which I think is Saturday.
That is a Saturday, yes.
My twelfth birthday.
Then we'd have a lot of trees and we could invite the children and maybe have cocoa for them.
The interesting thing about, and I'm also just an observer, but the interesting thing about pushing it back too is, it gives you a fun village event in what is otherwise a dead time.
In a million.
You know, you're.
And the deep middle with two.
So where's the, where's, so where's the, where's the spot between like the the peak Christmas tree pickup, you know, hall and even waited too long, you know?
I think the twelfth, I think the twelfth is perfect, because a lot of people take their tan- tree down.
So that, but that's. That's long after the twelve days though, that's, that's a week and twelve days, is that too far?
Well, I mean.
I don't think so, because if you took your tree down.
Yeah, think about how long my server left us.
I, I think, right, the truth is said to the, the, the needles got just a little, they haven't touched them, that's when the mouse forgot about it, you know?
Exactly, oh, yeah.
I think we.
I like the twelfth a little, cause I'll be there, me, me too.
Yeah, we all be here.
Yeah.
But I can't do this just for me.
What?
I I have a couple of this separate questions, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off, but.
And I think that Saturday would be more fun, cause children would be able to come, they could stay up a little late.
Yeah.
Dance around the fire.
You know, you know what it was, you know what, you know what it was the second, that's where it came from, cause we were initially talking about doing like a first night thing, doing that on New Year's Eve, having the Christmas tree bonfire. And then we just thought that there's too much else going on in town, so we'll do it the next day, it does, it's still like sunset, the next day, it's just, yeah, cause people have the day off a lot, you know, yeah, exactly.
Right, everybody's working and smoking on fire, it's a very good idea, someone wants to jump over it and they're jumping into it.
I know very few people that take their tree down that are like, I think most people wait.
Yeah, oh, I think so too.
To take their tree down.
Alright, we're, sorry, I'm just looking for a date calendar.
Stuart had something.
Yeah, I think.
What if we just um kept the quantity of trees so we could have the fire, and then the rest of them, put them through the wood chipper and people come down there and then they can take a bank of mulch home with them, which the environmentalists would like better.
I feel bad, man.
Yeah, I want, I need mulch for my condos.
Sally, how many cookies are you?
Cookie Monster, my day.
I have thought of several municipalities that do that, it's a very nice service for residents, it's a very nice thing to do.
That's awesome.
Cause we will, cause the thing is too, is the the Christmas, especially if they've been sitting out long, they're just gonna go up like a bag, you know, a bag of gasoline or something, it's like, so we'll, but we'll have that mixed in, well, no, like, like pine, no, dry pine, it's like, whatever. But we'll, but we'll have tons of other wood that we're gonna use anyway, so we're gonna use that for the, some of the burning too, you know, so it's not like a twenty-minute event.
Um, okay, I have a completely separate question though, what what will the mark left by this fire look like in our park?
So the twelve? Blue tells me there's not one, cause the, I can't remember where he put it.
Because we have no trace principles within, would would dictate that we would have to dig a hole in order to have a fire that is safe.
I think it's, I think it's on the baseball diamond.
Okay, if it's, if we're doing it on the sand.
Cause the ash just gets, we just sweep, it's just all the sand.
Well, that's perfect, actually, the sand will put out the fire.
The sand doesn't. And it doesn't damage the baseball, people playing baseball in the spring anyway.
Okay, alright, then.
And oh, the other thing is.
But it doesn't bother me, but we have to make, but can that be part of it, that that's, that's where we're doing it?
Oh, you you think Blue's gonna wanna deal with the turf damage from a fire on the ground?
No, I think he doesn't, which is part of why I'm thinking about it.
Um, the other, the other option, depending on whether we get winter this year, is uh.
Whether we get winter.
You should both test it out on my lawn.
Um.
Hey, Chatty Cathy's, I think it's a neat idea, thank you.
Thank you, eat some more cookie, um, the other, the other, the other option we have, depending on the temperature, this Blue and Kevin said they used to do is, is take um the Bobcat and build up snowbanks in the park and the fire room comes and hoses it down to have a ice skating rink next to the bonfire, if we could, if, God knows where we found someone to rent ice skates, so people own them anymore, but but we we don't know the temperature, it could be sixty degrees on January twelfth, yeah, that's what, it's like you see, ice skating for a, like a New Year's Eve thing, ice skating and a bonfire, yeah.
We've done that before.
Uh, well, when you, when you first, when you first were saying that, I was thinking that we, that they would bring the snow and it would make snow fuzz for people to sit on.
So if it gets cold enough, we'll find out, we could have that option. Could do that as well.
Well, we're, we're assuming we're gonna have snow.
Yeah, alright, so, well, there, any other question, like, what are there, any other holes in this?
Just a suggestion, put it on the website, let's get people out.
Oh, this is not gonna take much to get word out about it.
Well, I think it's important.
So the twelfth?
We'll, we'll, we'll finish the final, add some details, find a band and we'll put it up, oh, posters all over town.
And Yarsel wants to play.
I'll move to approve on the twelfth.
Well, we gotta fill all the details, yeah.
Their acoustic, which is part of the beauty of it. We could get Yarsel upstate rub down.
Josie's band.
Yeah, we have to talk to Josie earlier, but then.
She will.
Um, cool.
Sounds like we've got a lineup.
Um, alright.
This will be a great event.
Sally's moved, yeah, I'll second it.
Create, next year have a walk to the park, a business district.
Jason.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry?
Next year you do like a parade through the business district or something.
Second, second.
I did, I did second it. Any other discussion?
Are we sure we don't wanna just have people burn them out in front of their house? No, okay.
Just a.
Open fire, you know, Brian, in reality, did I get a?
All in favor? I did, I seconded it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, okay, there's a.
I have a good idea.
Very excited.
But just make sure to change the date, remember.
It's gonna be awesome, I love fires.
Alright.
Which one is that, is grocery, is grocery next?
The, uh, I have revised.
Oh, you revised, okay.
Cause I know that there's been a couple of emails sent out about this and a couple of questions, and I had a couple of phone calls, but I just wanna know, one question is still outstanding.
More.
Okay, so who wants to go first, should that, you, do you wanna, so?
I agree, the money issue, we authorized in May, I didn't even realize that it was that long ago.
But it took effect in June, cause it's new blood here, yeah.
And then we couldn't really begin it, because the server.
Waiting on the server.
Was waiting on the server, but we authorized the expenditure and signed a contract that revised would create and do our website. So have they been?
Well, this is what I, we had a long talk on the phone about this, I explained it.
Yeah, I know, I know, but the question is, then, if they're not doing it and our IT people recommend that we do it a different way, then I suggest that we have to unauthorize the contract.
Well, I don't know if our IT people are recommending that, um, I I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that statement. Um, I think our IT people, and granted I am kicked off the.
Well, you didn't show up for two months, yes, you you were, you you denied, you didn't answer phone calls for years.
IT. Well. I was at work, I worked during the day, I worked during the day.
You didn't answer phone calls of when a time would would be good for you for two months total, five weeks in the beginning, three weeks in the future.
When? Did I, was I dodging your phone calls, at what time, at what time was I getting phone calls that I, that I was dodging?
I did, on several occasions, send emails trying to make it to times that it complicated.
Yes, yes, and and when was the last, when was the last time you had a meeting, one o'clock on a?
After you refused to answer calls, when would be good for you, we can't hold up work for you for two months, Brian, I don't know why you expect us to.
Jason, there are no committee meetings that happen during the day.
Um, Brian, I'm not talking about you avoiding attending meetings, I'm saying you wouldn't.
I'm not talking about avoiding attending meetings either.
Are you gonna let me finish the sentence or no?
No, I'm not, because it's, because you're acting in a ridiculous way, and we authorized to do this contract, the reason we're not doing it is because you don't wanna do it. Because you, cause you believe that doing it a different way is better, except we haven't had a website for months, and we don't have documents available to the public for months, and there are specific things, which I'm not gonna mention that are in, that we're in trouble for, because we don't have stuff up on the web for months, and now you're talking about setting up your own website and changing the uh internet address of our website to have that as some stopgap until you and I guess Katie figure out how to do your own open source or whatever on our server, when we've already authorized this contract, which is provides a service that is extremely user-friendly, extremely adaptable to the purposes that we have, would be able for the town to piggyback on, and was all ready to go, and it should have been started, I mean, it really, we could have been implementing this all throughout the summer, yes, yes, right, 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 of course, of course, but you could have been designing this throughout the summer and then implemented it as soon as the server went up. But because you wanted to do it a different way, you're doing it a different way, so you wanna blame me, that's fine.
What proof do you have of that, Brian? You just accused me of something, prove it.
Okay, well, there's e- there's emails that you sent that said, oh, well, I chose to do it a different way, I didn't think this was the right way to go. You sent them to me and you sent them to Ariana, you did, so I mean.
Brian, lying, lying about what I say.
It's not lying, oh my god.
Not not letting me explain what's actually happened in the real world is not productive.
You live in the real world now?
Is not, is not productive, you either want answers to your questions, which I don't.
I'm not really asking questions, what I'm telling you is the truth, um.
Here's the thing, is that you wanna, and I said this last time, you know. Most of these things are left on the agenda, are things that can be answered simply by a phone call or an email and answered much more quickly than waiting for a board meeting. Which means that getting the information is not necessarily the point of having on the agenda. Now, the fact that you've just made repeated accusations against me without giving me a chance to explain and are continue to cut me off. Says to me that there's another reason here and I don't want that is, I don't know what you what you expect to get out of this or why you think this is a good way to resolve a situation, but you clearly do.
Because you send out insane emails all the time attacking everyone, so I can't send you emails. That's why, because you, because whenever I send you an email, it comes back with like some terrible thing about me instead of just. Like responding to me, you know, you're normal human, so then the only way I can do it is to bring it up here in front of everybody. That's why, because there's always like attacking emails and I just. Try, I mean, the number of times I've come out to you and just tried to talk to you like a human and say, let's bury whatever stupid hatchet there is.
Personal grudge against me, not about the.
No, because the emails you sent out on the stupid website, we're also condescending and antagonistic and. You know, all of those things, so I don't, you know, I don't really care, the the thing that upset me is the idea that you're. Moving the website to a different IP address and I asked you not to do that because I think that's just not the right way to go and we already have.
Well, clearly you don't wanna answer, so.
Alright, alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know, I keep interrupting you, but you're, but immediately it turns to attack to me, so go ahead, what do you got?
Please, no interest in responding to pretty much anything unless you're interested in phrasing it in a polite civilized question.
Oh, polite civilized question, okay, so why have you chosen, why has somebody chosen to not use the revised contract? Please, thank you.
As was explained in a couple of different forums over the past six months and I believe Sally summarized it pretty well earlier. The revised contract was signed earlier in the year, um. Before we knew the extent of the server updates. On the advice of Brian and basically using common sense, I decided not to spend lots of taxpayer money. On something we may not need until we were sure we needed it. In September, when we finished the server upgrades, Brian spoke, Macaluso spoke to me about what options we were going forward. Um, the revised contracts seemed to duplicate a lot for cost. A lot of what we were getting for free. Um, about this time we're having these conversations was when Katie was trying to call you, uh, Brian Kimbus. In order to find a time that was convenient for you, in order for the IT committee to meet regularly. It took more than five weeks, um, I believe, and Katie corrects me if I'm wrong. The only answer Katie got was when she finally cornered you here to those board meeting and made you take out your calendar or at least got a confirmed date.
I asked her, I asked her at the at the board meeting, but okay.
At that point, the IT committee was waiting to begin our work because of the criticism we've gotten about not including him. So we waited five weeks, I didn't realize it was that long, I'd actually got upset at Katie thinking that she was um not prioritizing this. So when it became clear that we had moved forward, we did, you were at the subsequent meeting. Um, the meeting following, we've only had another one since then, um, which again, after waiting almost a month, three weeks. Um, to hear a response which didn't come from you, I decided again we need to move forward. So we're behind by almost two months uh out of courtesy to you, as a matter of fact, and um. The work would have gotten done faster, I wish we were farther along, but we're not.
It's almost like.
The point is, is that the, it seems likely at this point, as I've written in several emails and said at this table more than once and in private conversations. That is possible with between SharePoint and something simple like WordPress or something else, I don't care, some blog platform, something like that. We can duplicate all, if not most, of what revised is offering, so. Rather than spend thousand dollars and lock us into a contract which we may not want in a month. Seemed better to set up a temporary thing to deal with the complaints that come from this board as well as the public about act um. Um, documents on the website. Again, which has been explained repeatedly by myself and the clerk as to why that happens and when for certain things and whatnot. So, to make it simple and streamlined to get the information out to the public most efficiently, we set up a temporary site. Which um control would be given from me to the village because Brian at Macaluso is the one who controls that. So it would not be under my control anymore than the current site is. That site would then revert to my control if I wanted it, it's just WordPress I have no need for now, um. As soon as we figure out the best way to move forward, if that's revised, we move forward with revised, if it's WordPress, we would go with WordPress, if it's something else, we go with something else. But we're, we have only so many hours in the day, we have a volunteer committee that is non-functional, uh, we're working half the best we have best. Um, have a hard time getting together in the first place. And have a hard time squeezing in often technical complicated information for people who aren't, this isn't our background. We have no money in the budget for a consultant, we have no money in the budget to hire people outside to help us with this. There's nobody else who's not tasked with something already who can do any of this. So if you don't like the job that I'm doing or that Katie's doing, the the response is not to send an email saying, no, stop. Trying to meet a need that I have complained about, it had a better option.
The only reason I sent an email that said no stop was because it was, the email you sent was so imminent. It was like, I'm doing this and I will, and I didn't have time to think about a solution, I was just like, oh god, don't do that yet.
Is that I know that that's something I can do. And then the question comes up and then I go to Joe, cause I couldn't, and this.
My problem was that we had a very short meeting the night you sent that email and I don't understand why we couldn't have had a conversation about it at that meeting, just because. You know, I I might have not been opposed to you doing that had we. Come to that kind of solution together and I think that is more the problem than that you wanted to do this was that you didn't include us. In even talking about it at the table.
Yeah.
But that's not the email you sent, the email you sent said, I'm going to do this.
Put up the temporary site.
And it was, yeah, exactly, that's my point.
Which I have the authority to do without bringing to the board, cause it's a temporary fix, like.
No, that's where I'm gonna disagree with you, Jason.
That's why I had Joe look into it. If I'm wrong, please don't.
Is authorized by the board. You came to the board. We were presented a contract. I know, I don't know, and I'm not even sure I care about technology. My age, but I do know when I authorize a contract. Now, if that contract is not supposed to be implemented for whatever judgment calls are made. I expect the recommendation to come back to this table saying. That contract isn't really what we want.
But it may be what we want.
Excuse me, I want the board to authorize X, Y, and Z at a cost of, that didn't happen. That's my concern, I don't care who attended meetings or who didn't.
But that, we're not at that step yet, isn't what I'm saying, Sally. Because all.
If we're not, I'm getting scared, but that contract was signed in May.
I know, we're not at that step and there's there's many reasons for that and I just explain some of them.
But but we are if if you and village employees are working on this.
Well, the step, I mean, the step we're at is we approved the contract and we should have executed it months ago.
Regardless of whether it's a waste of money?
It's not a waste of money.
How do you know?
That well, that's why I don't understand.
I looked at it, you act looked at it, the ways two clerks looked at it.
How how thorough is your knowledge of SharePoint, do you know whether whether this is the decision?
SharePoint is is interesting to, I don't know that much about it, but you wanna know what, at the same time, we have people slowly researching it now. We've already made a decision, let's move forward and have a new website, like I don't understand what the problem is, even if it.
Because it's not one to risk taxpayer money for to pay for something we could get for free in a month.
But you approved it and we did risk taxpayer money and it's something that provides a decent layout for a website. That every single department head would have the ability to use from the back end. It's not, SharePoint is gonna be something where you have to.
Paying them for months to design before you see anything, right? So we're gonna need something in the interim regardless.
Yes, no.
They don't?
But they don't.
But that could have been happening.
Look, this, this could have been.
They can't design until they know what we can do, like, it's.
I gave Brian a list months ago.
And yeah, I mean, we like this could, we could have did the layout over the summer and then had them implemented by August or September. We chose not to do that, we said, oh, we'll wait until the server's up, okay, that's fine, so now September, we could have started on it. Uh, October, November.
This is why we have committees for things, cause this is not something we need the whole board to be discussing all the time.
I thought we had a committee, I thought it was the two of you.
We're working on it and the committee said we need more time.
Well, kind of, except that.
You're not at the meetings, Brian.
I was at most of them and the last one that, and the last one that I was at, we, it was said that we're not gonna. Do revise anymore, no, actually, the last one, at the last one, at the end of the meeting, I asked Katie. To send you the signed revised contract to remind you that we had a signed contract with the revised, cause you were like, oh, I don't know where we are with that.
And Brian Macaluso um was reading it, was reading it to make sure we still, it's still needed.
Already approved it and we can have all of our stuff available on the web and.
You don't know that actually.
I do know that, because that's what they do is build websites, not only that, our our problem.
I'm admitting that I'm.
Have have we called PCS regarding our website?
I, I mean.
We're getting flipped out here.
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
We approved something and I really would like to see it happen, Nora and Amanda worked on this, they sat with. Different companies and they recommended revised to us based on, you know, the user interface and how user friendly it was going to be. And I think it's really important that we move forward with it and I and I don't know, I don't understand why there was an unforeseen conflict. You know, why, why did we not know? Yeah, why did we not know that we were gonna have?
This year, this is the only conflict.
Your, in your email, you said there was an, there were unforeseen problems and I don't understand why there were unforeseen problems in something where. Our IT people have looked at this contract, our former clerks have looked at this project, at this contract. And everybody seemed on board with it when we signed it, so I don't understand how there could have been unforeseen problems. And if you're telling me now that there weren't unforeseen problems, then I don't understand why we haven't moved forward, because that was the reason that you gave me in an email, that's why we had.
Then let me explain it again, um. We did not make the decision on the the server, we didn't even know all the things that needed to be fixed in the server. When we looked at, when Amanda and Nora looked at these contracts and when. Um, and and our IT, and our our IT people did not review this, if you remember, because our IT firm was one of the ones who submitted a contract. Brian and Alan did not look at the revised contract before we approved it, um, so. The the delays were not on revised's end or in like the board's kittens shit signs, you mean signed end. Cause this was signed before, I believe, we would even finalize necessarily the all the costs for the server upgrade. As you said, the server was upgraded until uh, it was finally installed in early September, the final tests were finished in early October. Um, the IT committee is, has, like I said, met just twice since the server upgrade finished. Because our IT people can work on the server upgrade, they don't have time, we only have a lot for five hours a week. We don't, they're not full time for us.
Well, no, we paid when we, when they were doing the server upgrade, we paid them outside of the five hours a week.
Right, but the all, but all of this stuff still is, they're doing other thing, it's not like they have five hours a week just for this.
Well, that's why we, that's why we pay them, that's why we give them the stake in two, sometimes, but okay, go on.
Um. The point was, the point was is now it's, so it's what, a month and a half since the final server test were run? And at our last, the the meeting before last, um, Brian Macaluso was reading over the revised contract. And was, I believe, then we actually reached out to them, but I can't remember, we thought that was a good thing to do first. Um, so the point is, is the same point I've been making, it's slow, it's frustrating, it's in progress. I made all the calls to the best of my knowledge, Joe seemed to have reiterated that I have the authority to make the decisions that I that I did make. And I didn't think it seemed to be a good idea to rush into a contract that now, especially since we hadn't initiated it. To then after, after we know that it could be a waste of money, to only initiated that. When with another few weeks. We can figure out whether it's actually the contract we need, if it is, we move, we go forward, if it's not. We can get a different contract wherever we need without having spent taxpayer money on something that's redundant.
Okay.
We need time to figure out how much of revised is redundant or not, if it's zero, then we're awesome, if it's a hundred percent, well, we're awesome in another direction.
Couple of weeks, I think it's a real waste of time to be working on a temporary website.
Can I just say something?
Please.
I think we have four different problems here. What I'm hearing. You recommended. This to the board.
No, Brian recommended that, I didn't recommend that.
I went back.
We both, we both.
You both did, okay? That brings problem number one, and that is, I'm sorry to say, it shouldn't have been recommended to the board if you had not analyzed it.
That's.
That, excuse me.
It wasn't the context that we needed.
Number two. We thought the server was going to be here sooner than it was. Brian had some problems, we were asked if we would extend. So that he could resolve those and have it installed by the end of September. We did that. At no time have I been asked to come back. And revisit this contract. Which is signed by you. Authorized by this board and as far as I'm concerned. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we have made an obligation to which we have a commitment.
Let me ask one question to answer that question, have we written a check to these guys?
No.
I I didn't think so, I just wanna make sure. There is a question, I I can, I mean, as you always hear from me, I can think of arguments based on that document, which is not a very detailed.
Are we gonna get into litigation and is it appropriate to finish that on camera?
I think on the, if we go much further, maybe, but what I'm about to say here, I think is is reasonable to to discuss. It may be that that contract can be terminated without obligation.
Maybe.
Which is why I've asked to review it.
Yeah, but they would. But they certainly might object to that, the way the contract is written. It it says that their standard practice, it's it's in artful language and I don't know, and therefore I don't know what its legal effect would be. It says our standard practice is to get the full year's fee, right? On that basis, they might claim that that was the understanding and say, where's our money? Another line in the contract that says that we'll bill. On, and you can terminate it anytime and you only owe us for what we've done. And on that basis, I can make a very strong argument that having done nothing, no matter whose fault it may be, they're not entitled to payment, so. It it would still be up in the air whether the revised contract would, you know, what you would do with it, if this board had a discussion and to, you know, to clarify where. What, how I felt on the website issue. The question that was asked of me by the mayor was, is the administration of the website or, I may maybe paraphrasing. Is the management of the website, something along those lines, and administrative, right? At the, at the time, and I would still say now, that the day to day operation of the website, making sure things get up, the, you know. Fighting with vendors if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, um, maintaining the website, providing content, all those. Administrative functions or management functions are administered. That does not mean that it's not an appropriate subject for discussion by the board. And I'm not weighing in, and I, and I, by the way, I, as I think I've heard the mayor say, the question here is when. When should that conversation take place, the board is taking exception to the fact that decisions were made. Prior to having that discussion, but I don't think I've heard the mayor say he didn't intend to have the discussion, so the question now is. What does the board, and I don't want to preclude, I'm not weighing in on whether the board wants to continue any conversation about. How this happened, about the management issue. But as far as looking to me for what the decisions are, it's about whether. It makes sense to continue with revised or at least to consider that contract and have the conversation with revised. And and you know, certain things that Jason has said, like, it may be that we can get everything we can get from revised for free. Seems like a reasonable thing worth discussing and and so all those things are perfectly legitimate things to be on the table and I would even say that the question of whether the temporary website. Regardless of whether. It, look, it certainly wasn't unlawful for the mayor to 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 open it. Um, whether you wanna continue it again, I will say.
Oh, it's not law, it's, I just sent them a link, a debt, a link to.
Okay, great, so there's something that I didn't understand, but the point is.
It was a draft.
Setting aside the question, I I of of the process. It remains a legitimate discussion for the board and and you should talk about what you wanna do, because in the meantime. The purpose of any website, whether it's temporary or the one we have now or what, you know, with its limited capability, is to post information.
Right.
And and that's a decision that the board should make, um, and should and should talk about now and for the next couple of weeks until you figure it out.
That's why I brought it up because. I have no, no doubt that once it's up. Once it's in place. It is an administrative matter. If I don't like the way it's being administered, that's a different issue.
Right, so you you discuss it, you talk about it, right.
But right now, we're not at that place, we're at the place of. We contracted to do something. And basically. If I understand all this correctly, in, there's an offer for a better contract.
Or no contract.
No contract.
No, that's the offer for a better contract. The no contract is an offer for a better contract, not the administration, the development of. As opposed to going along with this for the development of, and I think the board needs to make a decision. Who's developing this?
How, what are you gonna use to base your decision on, because it keeps saying that I don't have any information to give you on which you can base that decision yet.
Then what if, what if, what am I doing?
It's a good question, it's why, it's.
Well, I mean. Well, I mean.
Okay, let let me slow down, sorry, wait, hold on, let me back up, cause I wanna make sure Sally, cause Sally also also says she doesn't get computers, let me just make sure.
I don't?
Okay, here's, here's at least the way I understand it. This is an option, it could be the best option on the table, revise. I'd like to find that out before we give them any money.
Why don't we find it out before we sign the contract?
Cause we didn't have share.
Because things change, Sally.
Because when we, when we got the server, we also got something called SharePoint. Which has, which is like a program on, let's call it a program on the server that may allow us to host websites along.
And do exactly what this does so better.
Possibly, we don't know. We don't know if it's better, we don't know what, what it takes to implement it, so it may be.
Why don't we know that?
Well, because it's, it's not like just something that, like I'm looking at the website now, it says.
Specialty.
Yeah.
Katie's been reading it, she knows more than I do.
I've actually on my own, my own friends purchased several SharePoint for dummy books. I've gone online to look at YouTube videos about SharePoint. There's, not only is it, it's not just like one little program that you can master, there are whole bunches of it. And you can go off into a different direction and what our computer technician Brian McAluso actually suggested was getting. Some kind of SharePoint point bootcamp, either somebody who came in, comes in to teach SharePoint. Or sending a representative to to a place to learn specifically SharePoint.
Right.
Um.
You know, let me pause you there, cause here's maybe one of the part, the same thing. SharePoint, SharePoint is not designed, SharePoint is not a web design program. That's just, it's what it is, is it's designed for big companies and organizations, it's an internal.
Well, it says, they say, they say they do intra and.
They do, but, but, hold on, let me, let me, let me say what I'm gonna, cause it may explain it before we interrupt. So if we were a thousand number organization, it'd be easier, but scale it up in your imagination. I'll give you an example of some of this, I think of it as like modules, right? We all would log, I'm sorry, we would all log into SharePoint through a website. And when you come into SharePoint, you'd have like a little desktop, a little screen, like the iGoogle or something like that.
Right.
So each one of us would be able to log into.
Every employee in the village, every volunteer, everyone would have a security access level we had designed and whatever. So, but don't, I don't wanna confuse them right now. It's a website that you open up and depending on what we stick in, what options stick in, there are options, for example, for calendaring. So for example, in the calendar, that one section of it, to example, be say the village hall calendar, which would be public. And would, as that changed in SharePoint, would automatically update it on the website. Then we, depending on your security level, you could have, for example, uh the calendar shows all the employees' days they've requested time off.
Right.
So you can see visually, right, things like that, so there's internal and external, you can have both. One of the things they do is, the one I'm excited about is project tracking. So they say the water plant upgrade, right? So on SharePoint, SharePoint's where we, literally everybody in the village would go to find out where, in information. So you might see the water plant upgrade, when you click on it, because of the agenda item, you would see indexed every PDF of every engineering report, the every map. Emails, maybe memos, meeting dates related to it, everything linked together. And then you can hit publish. And then hit publish, sections of it can be published, so for example, maybe not all the emails are public, but every time Katie uploads a PDF. And tags it, it's automatically.
Publish your calendar.
It's basically, it's Google, it's Google Doc, Google. Google Suite, the Google Suite, only, Google Docs, the Excel, every program you get, the Google Doc suite. It's like that, only a hundred times more complicated and it has its own social networking inside, things were not, were too small to use.
Why, why didn't we know we were gonna get this?
Brian discovered, it's a standard thing with the server, he was focused on the physical stats. When he was installing all the software, it came with it, it's a enterprise grade software, it doesn't cost us anything. So you've got this industrial scale software that does more than revise, overall, does more than revise, but the parts of it that do the web may duplicate what revise did. Once you learn it, no, it's, we wouldn't have to, no, once, after, the setup is complicated, not the using.
You'd probably need, you'd probably, you'd need IT help.
Exactly, to make, to build the, to build it and make the structure for it.
So we're coming up with a scope of this, we're, it's possible, but we had to, and that's a budget discussion, but. We're scoping out what this, what what the impacts of SharePoint are on this and other systems too.
Okay, let me ask another question, how much is Brian being paid above and beyond installing the server right now?
What, I, because whatever his standard contract is, whatever's uh container is.
Whatever his yearly retainer is, I think it's somewhere.
And that is.
I don't wanna speak, that's, that's five hours, five hours a week, or whatever it is, for IT. So computer breaks, you call him and.
Yeah, but but is, are we being charged above and beyond that retainer? For this, these meetings that are building up?
No, that's, that's part of his.
Him coming to the meeting.
His keeping, keeping, keeping himself up to date with his job. No, no, no.
No.
The only cost exposure is if we.
Is this?
No, no, not only, if we go for this now and it ends up being a bad deal, that's the only cost exposure. If we go for this now and it ends up, it's the perfect deal, then we wouldn't have lost it, risked anything.
Except our website's been down and not working, and community can't get to it.
Well, it doesn't.
That bothers me.
I wish I could turn the switch and put it up tomorrow, but I can't.
Alright, so, so I have a question, have we contacted PCS?
Who, why, we got rid of them when we hired.
They will, they still host our website?
Oh, HVI, I mean.
Eight, yeah.
Um, I can't remember.
I don't know.
Okay.
I know, I mean, I don't remember if they've actually physically transferred it in-house yet.
Okay.
It's, I don't know if it's resting here or there.
Because when they, cause when they were, when they were still doing our site, um. And Amanda had problems posting things from time to time, she would call them and they would explain. And when I was trying to explain to you guys the other days about how old websites are coded, you know, we were briefly talking about it. Um but we should, I mean, we used to have our master plan, we used to have. The uh consolidation plan was on the website, very long, very, all the minutes, I mean, very large PDFs.
It's, it's breaking down.
But, but it's the same as it was, so there's, so either we have too much on there or so, I mean, and this, and this is the problem, so if.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
If the people who have the website currently, who are currently administering our website, if you can get in touch with them.
I'm actually pulling up email right now from, because when I add things, like I added the agenda packet, the agenda on Friday, they sent me an email that says it's been added. I'm looking for that right this second.
Okay, so I mean, that could be something in the meantime. This, you know what, this, this could be a good solution, I think part of it would be like, you know, if this was, if this was the plan. And we did sign a contract, I think everyone on the board would have preferred. That you come back and say, hey, look, like, I'd really like to look into this, and then we have Joe look at it and see what our exposure is to. Being upheld to this contract if we don't execute on it.
Which I've already asked her to look into, this, I, like I said, this is, I just, it's not that I'm not gonna talk to anybody before I sign, that's insane, I can't do that.
But you gotta.
But I need, I need information to give you before I can have a conversation, otherwise we're just gonna spin our wheels, say hello, I don't knows, and we waste an hour at the board meeting.
Well, I don't think, I mean, I don't believe discussion means an hour, an hour waste of time, but I also, you know, like, then when my reaction is like. Oh, don't go, don't go switch the address to another website, like, because my immediate is, it's like, no, 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 don't just do that. Like, you know, if we had more into it, then I think it would be a different response. I do think SharePoint could be a good thing, I also think that without someone very tech savvy or getting someone down here to. Set up the infrastructure, it may take a lot longer than we think.
Let me ask you, alright, then let me ask you a question, I sent out, probably more than a month ago now. I sent out at least one long email, Brian McAluso followed up with another one clarifying things, updating everybody at IT and inviting questions. Call me, call Brian, no one has any questions until it comes here. So, you know, it's, it's hard to be prepared when I, you know, it's. If it's an open ended discussion with no specific action that we're looking to take.
I'm looking for specific action.
I know you are.
And you keep not.
Look, cause he's saying he wants to wait and find out more about SharePoint.
I wanna break this contract. And be done with it.
And then if we, and if this is a good one to go for?
Should have implemented it or get out of it now.
I don't, either of those are usable options, Sally.
I think it is, because we don't have a website.
And we don't know, we don't even know.
Well, I can provide you. An analysis on that, and and it probably will also include frankly, just reaching out to them and telling them that it's under consideration.
That's fine.
I mean, otherwise, it's all theoretical anyway, because no matter, I already, I already have a sense, I've already explained to you my sense of what the arguments are. And all that means is we have an argument, so it's probably, I'll reach out and I'll start to negotiate this.
Have we talked to them at all?
Not in a while.
Because one, and one of the options, what we could say to them is.
I know.
We haven't gone forward. We have some concerns, it's, and I can lay out the position that we feel like we aren't obligated under, and you're, and we may. After looking into it, sign a new contract and write you a check. But we, but we're, we're not gonna execute on this contract, that would be like the starting position, that they're not out of the game.
This is exactly what I wanted to avoid, because this may be. A a waste of time and money.
Well, well, part of these two, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done with this.
Okay, is. You know, I do feel like undertaking this SharePoint thing and getting everyone acclimated to it. Is not gonna be like a, a three month project, it's not gonna be like a six, I mean, it's, it's big, like designing all these modules.
Alone has to be triaged, lots of bells and whistles, it'll be cool, but not essential.
Would have been great if we could have done this in the.
Had something for the pu, the public at least, and then developed our inner structure, and then if. Two or three years down the road, we say like, alright, like, we've got something strong enough where. Let's drop what we have or try to connect it to what we do have, and then move forward. We've at least had like a, a good website, maybe we could have even got the town to buy in on this, cause I mean, they said they wanted to piggyback on what we were doing.
And you know, could have, would have, should have, but there's so many hours in the day, so many days, I mean, I don't know what else to say to you, except. This is getting worked on and there's no more people to bring in, there's no more time, there's no more money. We need something for the public, cause you all yell at me about it, and then stop me from providing a solution, so I'm gonna.
But this was a solution.
Solution to that, no, but there, I.
But this is still, but this is still most ahead of time.
No, 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 well, alright, my, this is my question. Can we, if we move forward with these people, can we not put this on the server?
No, we won't.
This website? Is there, is it incompatible where if we move forward with revise, we couldn't, we could not have it up and running?
Wasn't.
Yes, so then, so then what you're saying in terms of us stopping you is not true. If this could have been moved forward with, and it was, because I, when you said there were unforeseen problems. I thought it meant that this was incompatible.
I did too.
And and that is, that is how you presented it to us in an, in an email, I don't know which out of the thousands it was. But it, you said, the words you used were unforeseen problems.
Not seeing the email, I don't even know what you're talking about.
I'll find it and forward it to you, but, but this is, but so that's why I thought that it meant that we. Literally physically could not make this happen.
So then.
The fact that we can literally physically make this happen means let's do it, we signed the contract.
How much money it wastes, you wanna do it?
It's not a waste.
It's not a waste of money, because we know that we will have a website and we'll, we'll be up and running. And if we had done it when we actually signed this contract, it would have been even more worth the money, because the last five months, we would have had something. More than that, seven months.
You guys, you really don't know, you don't know what you're talking about, and you haven't educated yourself about the issue, and I don't know what else to say, I don't know what else to say.
You're telling me we couldn't have a website right now?
This is what I'm asking, if we had done this in May, could we not have put it on the server?
It's a moot point.
It's not, it's a question I'm asking.
How's that a moot point?
I don't know.
What do you mean, if we, if we started working on this when we signed the contract, we started, we started building the architecture like.
That I don't know everything, Adam, you wanna tell us whatever you wanna know?
No.
Learn your own job.
That, that.
If we had this, well, if we, if we just started designing this after we signed the contract. And then by the time the server was up, popped it onto the webs, onto our server, we would have a website currently. There's no two ways about it, and then we could have been.
Extra work being done on a temporary website.
And I don't think either of you know the answer to your questions, you all know what you're talking about.
Question, I'm telling you, that is the case.
You, you understand the server specs and the revised software well enough to know how well they fit together, and our past server and the transition process, and what Brian was doing and what he did.
One, that's not software, number two, that yes, it can be placed on our server, cause the server is just a memory bank, so yes, definitely a hundred percent. And you're restoring information, that's code, that when someone types into our server, it shows up on their page. So on their screen, so yes, I, I.
You guys have plenty of opportunities to ask questions in a forum.
Supposed to be implementing.
Yeah.
To ask questions in a forum of where you could get educated answers and that's not interesting to you.
You're calling me uneducated, but I'm telling you it's right.
And that's always persuasive, um to prove your education level.
Do that all the time, come on.
You're dismissing me.
And I use.
Let's, let's stop, okay, alright, alright, stop, everybody stop.
Yes, sorry.
Do we want to do this?
How long after we sign this would a, would a website be up and running?
Alright.
That's my question to you, Jason.
Depends how long we wanna take.
So you spoke to revise about that?
Yeah, we both did.
So however long we want, that's how long it can take.
That's how long it takes us to lay out the template of what we were looking for.
Which we talked about in June, because I asked you what you needed from me.
Mm-hmm, and that's still.
Conversations.
And that's still being worked on, because it takes a long time to do these things, because there's a lot to read and there's a lot to look into. And like I said at the beginning, we have no staff who's trained in this, we have volunteers, we have.
Company, Jason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jason, we wanna perform this contract.
Uh, I just.
You can shake your head, but we, we approve this.
You don't care about reason or arguments or facts or anything?
We, we one hundred percent do, and the facts are here, they're in front of us.
Alright, so I'll ask you again. How many months between now and when, if we sign the contract tomorrow, how many months would it be?
We signed it already.
Cause that's, cause obviously that's the, the tongue of the point that I was about to make. If this contract were, if we called, call, I'm sorry, okay, I'll be very specific, if I called, I don't know, Bill at Revise. And offered him a check in the amount of whatever. How many months would it be between that happening, them getting their check, and the site being live?
It would take, it would take as much time as it takes for us to figure out whether or not we like this template. Or we want this, this to be this way, or or maybe they present us with something, and we have no revisions to it, and we like it, it goes up quicker.
Like the landscape architect.
So you really, I can't believe you people wanna potentially waste money like this.
We, you recommended it.
No, I didn't.
Jason, I went back and looked at.
Sally, Sally, I'm sorry, wait, you got, Sally, no, I'm sorry, Sally. Yes, in May.
And it was signed.
And things changed, do you not understand that things changed, Sally, that new information's come on the scene?
Then I expect you to bring back. A, a, a recommendation to bring.
And I told you, I told you on the phone, that's what I'm gonna do.
At the table, this is now almost.
Months old, yeah.
And.
And they were aware of the delay, they were fine with the delay till September, they knew about it and, you know.
And we don't have a.
Honestly, what I'm gonna do is the same thing that when the four of you, or three of you, or two of you, whoever is, do this kinda stuff is, I'm just gonna go back to Joe afterwards. And ask him, of all of the things that you demand that I do with my time, how much of you actually have the authority to tell me to do, and we'll find out.
You're gonna do what you always do, sit, go against the law.
Legal authority that you have is what all establishes.
The reason you, you have a contract. Now, I may not understand website development, and I've never claimed I do, and I don't, but I do understand. That if I have limited time. I hire somebody to do a job for me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's part of a contract and why you go outside. So that you get something done in a timely manner that you don't have to spend your time on. Now, if you're saying to me that you wanna spend your time on this and it's fun and exciting, that's a different issue. My issue is, I signed a contract to have a job done. Which is supposed to save the village and your time playing with websites.
Mm-hmm.
If this is not the website that in thinking about later on. Should not have been recommended to us. Then.
Or was the right decision then and not now?
Alright, if it's not now.
I wanna find out whether it's our decision now, that's all I'm asking for.
It's eight months later.
And, okay, who cares, why, why does that matter?
Because I want a website that's running.
It matters a lot.
Want one right now, Sally.
Okay, it matters a lot that we signed a contract almost eight months ago.
It matters that a, a, a member of the public came here tonight and said, there's no zoning board minutes online. That, that matters, he filled out a FOIL request that could have, part of it at least been easily solved by himself, and he couldn't do that because we didn't have a website. That seems like we're.
You really need to stop, you need to stop criticizing on this whole stuff with Brian, you're part of the reason this is behind.
I am not, if you wanted, if we signed this contract and you chose not to do it, that's not me. You wanna have committee meetings, I volunteered to head up this whole thing and you said, no, 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 I don't want you doing that.
You can't be bothered to close certain calls to see when you would like to attend a meeting.
Because you're not even in the office, the next point on the agenda is how your mailbox has been filled for three months. So let's, let's, we wanna start throwing things back and forth.
You wouldn't look well if we did.
I wouldn't look well, I'm not getting paid thirty six thousand dollars a year to be here full time, who's never here, so let's. I'm a part time village employee.
Are you saying that I don't work?
Uh, yeah, well, you paint houses, I mean, so there's that. Uh, yeah, well, you pay houses, I mean, so there's that.
Alright, enough, we have an irrational alis, I'm going to vote. I am going to say enough is enough and I'm going to make the following motion. That by the third meeting in February, I want a recommendation and a resolution regarding this.
Nope.
I'll second that, but it's gonna. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Question.
Sorry, yeah.
Why the third ma- meeting in February?
Because I'm being.
You said January, February.
In the Ja- yeah. And I wanna know. Is this gonna be implemented?
And does it?
And if not, why not and what are we doing?
I understand, I just the date is the question, do you, you want, so you wanna wait to the third meeting in February?
Well, I, I don't want, I mean, you know.
No, another two months is fine, it doesn't matter. I'm voting no anyway, so I'm just being facetious.
What, you want a shorter date?
Yes.
I wanna like.
Alright, amazing.
No, I'm not, I'm not voting for that, I want, I just want the contract.
I, I wanna, yeah, I, I wanna go through with this contract.
I'll withdraw my motion then.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to.
Execute, I mean.
To execute the already authorized and signed contract. I just made a motion, I am making a motion to execute the already authorized and signed contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion, is that, and so if he, now if he doesn't wanna execute the contract, what are we doing?
That's not what I'm saying.
No, I think what, and Jason, if I mistake this, tell me. What Jason has said is, he, he is advising the board that he thinks it may be improved to go forward with the contract. Um, if the board wants to go forward with the contract, you adopted it, you have the right to adopt it. And if you adopt it, and if you now move that that check should be sent, Jason has to send it.
Exactly.
Right, I mean, you don't disagree, so I think.
That's the line, the board authority, absolutely.
You can make that motion. I mean, that is, that's what I meant when I said, it's, it's not, when I say the day-to-day operation of the website is, is, is administrative. I didn't mean that it was an inappropriate subject for the board as to how you ma- you know, how you. Execute the website, right, it's a contract matter and, and you can, so Jason has said. He thinks it may be fiscally improved.
All, all I'm saying, all I said is that it's now executing this contract is a gamble. In May, it was not, I'd like to make sure it's not a gamble before you execute.
Why I'm.
Well, how was our, how was our first motion? Where we authorized me to execute the contract?
How, what do you mean how, I, what's?
Like, so, so, so.
How is that not fun?
Didn't we do this in May?
I, yes, I mean, I, I will tell you. The other time it should've been two months because this is, revise is not at a loop on this, they knew we were waiting till the server. We had those conversations, so they knew September, October, the earliest. So their delay is only a, a month or two, six weeks. Well, more than that, two and a half.
Are, are you asking, haven't we already done this?
Yes.
Yes, I think you have.
So what's the difference in doing it again?
Well, you don't, the, the difference is that the question that's been raised by the mayor. Is whether it i- it is wise to actually send, send a check. Cuz that's the next thing, right, to actually get revised to do the work, you've gotta write the check. Um, the mayor has said, he thinks that may not be a wise thing to do. But, but. So that's what you, you know, Brian, the answer to your question is, it's not so much that your, your motion isn't. To execute the contract, your motion is, we want to.
Authorize payment to revise.
Authorize payment and go forward with the contract.
I thought that's what we had to say.
It, it is, but again, the new, the new set of facts that Jason has asked you to consider. Is, is since we have not written it, I mean, forget about why and, 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 and I don't mean forget about it. For purposes of this discussion. What happened to date is not relevant to the question right now, which is, the check has not been written yet. Once you write the check, the money is expended, right? And now you, you, there's no question anymore that you are in business with revise. You can avoid that. If, for instance, your motion was to hold and get a recommendation, or your motion was, I wanna, I wanna get out of the contract with revise. So. Yeah, you could argue that if you did nothing tonight. The check should go out, but since the question's been raised, it's probab- if that's what you want to do, it's probably smart. Just, just in sort of the public record to make clear that you want the check you want.
Jason, how long do you want? If we were gonna give you some time to figure the rest of it out, how long would you want?
Personally, I was hoping to have it done, at least. Information there to make a decision by the end of the year, but I'd really wanna talk to Katie and Brian to see, make sure there's nothing stupid in their schedules that would. Make that irra- irrational. And that's again, I can't answer that.
If, if we put this off till a board meeting in, let's say, January, which one would you want it to be?
Um, well, the later, the later one, I mean, this is the thing, I'm gonna get it to you as soon as possible, it's not like I have any reason to delay this. This holds my work back as much as anybody else, so. Um, I want it as soon as possible, as soon as I can get enough information.
Well, I'm saying, cuz tonight we also had a deadline, but it just.
Well, if you wanna aim for the, for the second meeting or the workshop, or whatever would be appropriate for January. When, cuz we've got the one in.
We've got one meeting that's gonna be very short.
The joint meeting? That's the first one of the month.
Right.
So you can't do that, right? And then, is it the, is it the, the workshop is after that?
Yeah, can I, can I say one thing here?
Workshop in case we.
Right, right, so it has to be the second one of the month.
Um, I don't know particularly, uh, a lot about the IT world either.
Me.
But I, I was. Anxious because of the Public Outreach Committee to get things on our website and it's been frustrating that we haven't been able to do it for months. Even though we have certain documents to put up there, so. Jason invited me to the, one of these IT meetings and I came to it. And while I don't understand all the details, I did get the concept. And, you know, and I can understand. Seeing how we can use this new program, but I also. Heard the explanation and it sounded like it was very complicated and mostly this program is designed for internal use. Department heads can talk to each other and there's a lot of good things that it can happen. But it seemed to me that the website would be down the road. After we do other things with, so I'm not prepared to wait. Till after I'm out of work, instead of a website.
That's the point, that would be the point. This development trip would happen as the site.
So, if it's gonna take too long to do it, I think we need to take an interim action because the people on this bill is deserve a website. And we, we have critical reasons for, for thing, big, important things that are happening and this has to go on the website, plus are other things to go on the website. So I, I. Understand the consideration about, let's use this software that comes for free, but when I hear it's gonna take three, six months to do it, we need experts and train everybody. To me, that means the website won't be up there for a long time. So, we need to have, to me, the critical part right now is getting a website soon because we need it. And, you know, I, I don't know what the best way to do that is, but that's what I, I think our central focus should be right now. Because, you know, maybe by the first. Or second meeting in January, we can have a specific proposal, this is the best thing to get us a website up immediately. And then we'll see how that fits into. This other bigger program that we had, because it sounded really complicated. We don't have money in the budget for it, we're gonna have to bring people in here to train people and take them away from their regular jobs, so it's a big deal, so.
This is budgeted.
No, I'm, I'm just saying this other thing, which might, might be wonderful, except it's not gonna be wonderful for a long time and in the meantime.
We don't know that yet.
Well. We don't know if it's gonna be wonderful, we know it's gonna take a long time, I mean, it certainly seems that way from. What the people who know anything about it, even our IT guy doesn't know much about it.
But that's from start to finish, not, you build a lot and then turn on a switch. So as, it's, you know, the things would start simple, so obviously the most important thing is calendaring or something like that would be first. The, the less critical things are the things that would take, you know, to get everything finally in place that could possibly be done, takes a long time, but.
I, I think that.
The basics are not as complex.
The basic things we want on our website, I think we need to come up with a plan so that that happens soon. And if that's an interim plan to be followed up with another plan later, that's fine. But, uh, you know, I don't think we can wait. You know, to get the Mercedes Benz here, we might, you know, have to take.
We need something to work.
We can afford one anyway.
Yeah, and, and we, we need to do some, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but, but, but we should be able to find out an answer to get a website up and running. Soon, because we have a critical, we, we're under a time press for a lot of things.
I don't understand why we can't be using our current website as it was, as dumb as it is. From what everybody says. And then do this other stuff. Why is our current website not functioning properly?
Can't take the long documents perhaps?
That's one of the reasons.
Taking long documents for a long time.
No, it hasn't, when, when, first one up in two thousand four, three. The, uh, the background program that was used was.
Okay, let's knock off the some things and put the pertinent thing along.
Here's the thing, it would take a long time, I think you and I need to maybe have a conversation, maybe you and I, Brian, about. Some of this, because it would, to do the education about how things work to that level, we'd be here for a long time. About why, why, what, why, why the site gets older, what slows it down, what possibly slowing it down and what some, like, why? What happens at these intersections? I, I don't know how else to say it other than that.
I understand what you're saying and I'm saying to you, that is not my field of expertise, I have a field of expertise. If I, if I need something over in this field of expertise, I'm willing to pay for it and have it done. That doesn't mean I have to know this field.
Right.
Okay, and all I'm saying is. I was asked to authorize a contract in an area of expertise I don't have, I did it, I did it in good faith, I want the website.
Okay, but there's a gap in there Sally.
And I'm.
Jason, if we have.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But, I want it fixed.
You said it was not your area of expertise, you trusted we've signed this. Um, now you want the website.
Yep.
Okay, but. And you keep coming back to that as if what I say doesn't, I don't know if you disagree or just. It gets lost. Let me put it this way. What I'm suggesting is this. Uh, let me, oh, man, I had a good minute for a second ago. Let's say, no, no, let, no, let me finish, let me finish this because.
We have a voice on the table.
Three point, I know we do, um.
I was like Sally.
Um. If you just bought a car or signed a contract for a car.
Mm-hmm.
And then discovered that you had one in the garage that might work after all that you didn't know. Would you still pay the car?
Sure, because I, I, in good faith, got the car I owe for it.
And I think that we.
And if I'm so dumb as to not know I can fix a car, then really I deserve it.
And I think that I understand, and I think I understand the fact that revise and our IT consultants were on the same page about when this would happen. Uh, which has been September, October. And I trust my understanding of contracts and my understanding of business. The one where if we find out that after waiting to see, that this is actually a bad deal. There may be ways for us, this contract no longer be valid, no, there's no, nothing violated. We've met our fiduciary responsibility to our constituents to find the least expensive best deal. And as I said before, it's not a matter of I'm saying this is bad, I'm saying, I think we might have a better thing right under our noses.
I think our constituents would have been happier with us moving forward with this contract than us having a website up right now.
And, and the, the car metaphor, the way I see it would be like, we have a, you know, really cool like fifty-seven Chevy. In the garage, but we're not exactly sure. Like if we can get it to get us to work every single day, like we know if it was prime condition, then it would really be a great car. But, we're still unsure about it, but we do have is a leased Toyota that's fuel efficient and will get us everywhere we need to go. Now, we could keep paying our lease on our Toyota or like ex, we haven't executed our lease yet, so it's, it's waiting at the dealership for us. And we could get that car, get to work back and forth every day and then start tinkering with that Chevy. Or we could bike to work every day, even though, you know, biking, whatever, well. We will take a motorized bicycle to work every day and then, and then we'll work on the car and try to get it fixed and get it. Get, and get to work on that, and that's, and that's kind of the way I see the metaphor and. You know what, this does, how, how much is the contract?
I don't remember.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty, thirty-five hundred.
I think so.
Thirty-five thousand, thirty-five hundred.
No, it's, it's not thousand, put it in the table.
Fifty-three hundred.
Fifty-three hundred, so that's a terrible amount of money for a website, I think.
I mean, considering last week, we agreed to spend seventy-five hundred and. Something that we're, we're, yeah, that we don't, we don't know whether or not it's gonna be a cost that we can cover.
I'm gonna say, no, that's enough.
Yeah, that's, that's a real conversion.
Bring it up very honest, that's not the issue, the issue we have.
We're willing to spend money on things, if, if we feel it's the most important, if it's very important. And we're going to do that and it's free to do it, and I think that this is one of those things. We're ready budgeted for it.
What was the motion on the table actually? No, the motion on the table currently is to execute the contract.
Yeah, the already authorized and signed contract.
Now, what?
And your idea was, well, you had another motion on the table, but her, her answer was.
You withdrew your motion, no.
Sally, my motion was. That.
You were gonna get rid of the contract.
No, she was.
I was, I'm not, I was going.
Wait until January.
Okay, so.
I was going to say that by the second meeting, it has to be.
You said the third meeting in February.
Cuz I think.
Yeah, what you wrote.
No, 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 we're gonna make it January because Jason thinks he can get it done.
That was my suggestion.
Third meeting in January, we have. In place.
A plan, a timeline and all that. I mean, we would not have.
And a website that can be used this spring for our purposes.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think what?
If, I don't think we'll have that, I think if you wanna be prepared to advertise for the consolidation and, and all the things that we have to prepare for. And the elections and everything else, I really don't, I mean, look. I'm not as familiar with SharePoint as Katie and Jason are, they've been working with it more than I have, but I really don't see. Being able to have SharePoint have a website, a full website for us.
That's, look, this is exactly what we need to answer.
Right, so we're gonna wait.
We're in the middle of signing the end.
But listen, we're gonna wait until the end of January and then we're still gonna have to either start executing that. And now we're into February, March, or we could. Execute this tonight and then.
Be in the February, March interval.
Well, we could have something, we could have some.
That's what they told me, several months before it's live.
It depends on what we want though, that, that is what they said to us, when we were at this together.
Yeah.
They said, it, it depends what we wanna do and how much we wanna put up and what we, cuz they said people get very nitpicky. And then it's like, oh, well, I don't like it like this, I don't like it like this.
So what, what actual decision can the board make about this? Cuz this blurs the policy and administrator, where's the line first?
It doesn't, I, I'm gonna beg to differ.
The whole issue Sally, can just.
No, just a second, you made a statement just now. Mixing apples and oranges. I am not interested in the administration or the management of anything. I am interested in having contracts executed, which is a board decision. And we were asked to make that decision.
Yeah.
And the question is, does this get executed tonight or not? That's the question.
And you had a motion to have it after a report in January.
And I.
Well, that, we saw a motion on the table, it's executed tonight.
It's her motion first.
So look, if. We want a website as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Then this is the way to go.
I disagree.
Then you give me a website sooner than they can do?
Yeah.
A full website.
A full website.
Sooner than what revise can do.
Define full.
I mean, it doesn't have to be full, it has to be able to at least be.
Public events, um, PDFs of all relevant documents for the meetings regardless of size. Maps, uh, and all building department applications, copies of local laws, drafts, copies of local laws. Meeting notices, minutes and agendas.
Okay, that's the temporary website, so, so that.
Temporary website.
But see, that could happen as we execute this at the same time.
It could also happen while we find out whether this is a good use of money or a waste of money. I'm betting, um, we should.
When, when could you have just said to me?
It depends on when I can budget the time, I slowed down and I got a lot of backlash for having put this work in.
This is also talking about him putting up.
A temporary.
His personal.
A simple, not my personal, anything, Brian, it's a.
His personal, a simple, not my personal, anything, Brian, it's a.
Well, not your personal, well, the one that you're expecting timeline design.
This isn't the, the.
Basically, all, all the.
No, this isn't the SharePoint.
All the information, all the information that is still, um, correct on the village site.
No, it's a blog.
Can be put on another website that is easily updated with anything we want, it won't look pretty, it'll look very simple and spare.
I don't care.
And it'll have all the information indexed accurately as a bridge until we either, um, have revise, uh. Get through that month period of design or. Wait a few weeks, see if it's a good call and whoever we do with does that period of design, so regardless.
And you can have.
Yes.
What do you call it, temporary?
Temporary site, like a bridge site.
It's a blog.
Up and going by the middle of January.
I can have it up at the end of the week if we wanted it there.
Why don't you?
Uh, because I got yelled at by two or three trustees for doing that, for even trying, so this is why I had Joe.
The upsetness came from you not including us in any decision making.
I'm not saying you can do what you want.
I don't say either that, I say what I can do with the law allows me to do on my own judgment. That's why my title is mayor and yours is trustee.
No.
Different portfolio.
And but Jason, we're supposed to be the team.
Okay, that's the mix up, that's the mix up.
The decision.
What we're discussing tonight is not in your domain as an administrator.
I agree, that's not, I was responding to another comment, not yours.
This is decision. Okay.
The issue having come before the board now. It is a board decision, every aspect of it, in my opinion, at this point, in other words.
Oh.
It being water under the bridge, whether on that particular day, Jason in response to not being able to upload something or finding the site to be un, non-functional. Whatever the state of affairs was. It's. That may well have been an administrative decision within his power that day. The questions now come before the board and therefore every aspect of what you guys are now discussing is, is, is a board decision.
A board decision.
What I mean by that is. Because both Jason and Ariana are correct about the, two of the ways you could go forward. One is you say we are going to execute on the revised agreement, we shouldn't keep saying execute, cause it is executed. Execute on means we're going forward, write the check, implement the contract, okay?
Implement the contract.
And at the same time, you can authorize the creation of a temporary website. As, as Jason has described, that will at least allow you to post public information, et cetera. And you can even have a conversation about exactly what should be on there, what kinds of documents should be on there. The other thing that is also true is what Jason has said, which is you can, and, and to some extent what your motion was about. You can also authorize the temporary website. And not go forward yet with revise and ask for more information so you can make that decision.
Which is what my motion, my.
That was your original, which is now withdrawn, the only motion on the table right now, we're still in the discussion phase of the motion to, to go forward with revise.
It's Ariana.
Um, one of the other decisions you could make is, is that there, i- if you're concerned about that day-to-day administration of that temporary site. You could make a decision to do either of those things, wait to get more information and make a decision. Go forward with revise and not authorize a temporary website. Just, just, you know, just in other words, if you're concerned that you, that you don't like the way that's good.
With revise.
No, that is, that is leave, status quo, leave existing.
That's correct, that's, that is a decision you could make too, so, so every aspect of it is now properly within your domain and you should make decisions on it.
The existing website, if I understand it correctly, isn't functioning. We cannot.
I don't know, sixty percent, seventy percent could pass, I don't know how you guess it.
I mean. We cannot put, can, and, alright, can we put.
Something exists, something.
It has limited availability, is what Katie just said, it has limited availability.
Alright, I don't, Katie, if Stuart and Ariana give you documentation. The reports, okay, let's just say the cons, all the consolidation committee reports.
It depends on the size.
Can the website go up, on, can they go up on the current website?
It depends on the size, the nine-page minutes that I did for the November first meeting will not go up.
So that's not satisfactory.
Okay, that takes care of that issue in my mind, now, if we do what Ariana has moved. To implement the revised contract. Can we? Also implement the temporary website. Implement the revised website, cause that's gonna take a while to do too.
Right.
And put a deadline on you coming back with a timeline for me, cause you know me.
That would be pointless.
At the first meeting of the board.
There would be, there would be no need for a deadline at that point.
Well, but it's.
Cause revise would just be doing the work and, and I would just provide this simple.
You could ask revise to tell you, to give you some.
Oh, for updates, then, oh, cause that's what you're talking about, yeah, yeah, not, because there's no decision made after that.
No.
Once we have revise doing the website, regardless of whether it's.
And you could still add on you said.
No, I wouldn't be, there wouldn't be no point.
Well, then what is all this stuff about share?
Because SharePoint, I think, can do for absolutely free what we'd be paying revise five thousand dollars for. And I would like to find that out before we send them any money, that's all.
If you go forward with revise, look, you can get more information, but all you're gonna be doing is making yourself upset if it turns out, you know what I mean, in other words, once that check is gone, there's a, you, you might as well have to get it up, you know.
The content doesn't upset me.
Okay, fair enough, but no, what I mean is.
I don't know enough.
I shouldn't have been facetious, what I mean is. If you go forward with revise, it means writing a check, once the check is written, decisions about whether you could, could have gotten it cheaper, can still get it cheaper.
Gone.
Well, but I see, I see.
As Ariana said, the money's been budgeted.
I think we threw that out when we signed the contract.
You made, that's your decision, I'm not gonna comment on that.
We could have probably done all of this prior to.
Well, I mean, for, again, it's really not in my purview, what I heard was that there were facts that weren't known then that are known now, that may have changed things.
Yes.
Now, the length of the delay, there's a lot of conversation about that, whatever, doesn't matter. So it, it may be nobody's fault that we didn't know better at the time that you adopted this. But again, here we are. So what are you gonna do about your website is what the board is discussing.
I want it up and running and if the temporary will do that for me and get to the community what we need out there.
It will do it faster than any other thing that's been proposed.
I don't care whether we go with revise or this other thing. Or wait and see if we need to do revise, but I want the temporary website up, yesterday.
It would seem to me that maybe the, the way to go is to. Uh authorize the temporary website and, and mayor said that it could be done quickly, so maybe that could be up and running. In the form of, the basic thing, by the end of the year, it's up and running with these basic things that we need, so we know that's taken care of, cause that's number one.
I'm trying to handle tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yes.
Information's getting out to the public.
And then by, and then by some early date, may, whether it's first meeting in January or something. To have enough analysis of the SharePoint to know if we can, within a short, relatively short period of time. We can get something that's just as good without paying, paying any more money than that, because yes, it may be free, but it's not free if we have to train a hundred people to come in here at three hundred dollars an hour to train our people. So some kind of analysis to say we go with revise or we go with, and this is what it's gonna cost for, for implementing the other one by some, say the first meeting in January, for example.
No, make it.
Have that analysis, just the analysis available, and then we can decide part two, whether to go with revise or go with the other thing. How's that?
Um, that's exactly what I think we should do, because I think getting the website up, uh more important, I think that's so important to have something there.
But, but we're drifting, cause now there's been, well, some talk about a different proposal on the, on the floor, already.
Start having a hand in it.
Okay, no, that's what I wanted to see, you wanna respond to it now.
Well, I have issues with, uh, asking the mayor to spend his time doing web design, I think that's probably the clerk's department.
I just do it for fun, honestly, I did that thing on Saturday night.
Okay.
I mean, he said, and that's what, I said that in my discussion, that. So, you know, if I have a job that I can't do, I pay someone to do and I expect it to get done, and that's not making a judgment.
Okay.
You know, if he's having fun doing this, I don't wanna hear about how he's so busy he can't do other things. That he's supposed to be doing because he's developing the website, I don't wanna hear that.
See, that's, that's the issue.
You know, we're, but, I mean, we're, we're paying someone to do that.
No, we're not.
The, the clerk is in charge of implementing the website. That's what we ta- tasked the clerk's office to do, was the change of information officer of the village.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna go down this road.
We're off topic.
Yeah, we are.
Are you withdrawing your motion or do you want?
I am not, I will not withdraw.
I've got my motion.
So it's still seconded though?
Yes, you brought it down.
Right.
Because I, I agree with Brian, I do not think, I mean, if you wanna play with websites in your free time, play with a different website, you don't play with our website. I think.
Wow, that's really inappropriate insulting.
Well, to, to, to be clear, the, the motion that's on the table, a- and I may be wrong, and if I am, we, we should make it clear. The, I think the motion, your motion is just about going forward with revise.
With this contract, yeah.
Right.
You would then, I think, probably have to have a different discussion about whether you're gonna authorize a temporary website and how that would be handled.
Maybe a separate motion regarding this temporary website.
My, my suggestion to make everyone miserable is to give the mayor the deadline somewhere in January, we could, I would. Be okay with putting off revise till January and asking the clerk's department to take over posting whatever it is to the website, all documents from here on out. That, that would, that would make, I think, sufficiently everyone equally sad, which is what we're looking for.
The problem with that is that we, I think we know already that.
We can't.
The documents that, one, many of the documents we wanna put on.
Not on our current website, on the temporary website.
He's, he's supporting the temporary website and you're doing the same thing that, that I basically.
Oh, a temporary one, okay, okay.
Except I want the clerk to do it, the clerk's office to handle it.
To instruct me to never upload things to the website and only have Amanda do it, or not Amanda, I'm sorry, Katie do it.
Katie, whoever she is.
Yeah, that, is that the gist?
Well, I'm not, I, I can't tell you what to do.
Clearly, so why make them, why make that part of the condition?
Because I want the clerk's office to handle the information.
She, uh, they do, Katie and Albert have full access to that site, they, uh, until I got the blowback, I had actually, they had actually already begun uploading things as, as they came in. To the temporary site as well, the things that didn't fit. So there's three people currently who can upload things to the site, the way to set it up.
Right. Right.
So my original motion was what Stuart reiterated, we're going to go with the temporary site. Come January and I think we'll make it the third meeting in January, but we have an absolute recommendation. Revise or else.
Maybe not, cause we still had to vote on Ari's motion.
We're still talking about it in this discussion.
Yes, is there any discussion for Ari's motion?
No, but I just wanna make sure that before.
We're still discussing Ariana's motion, we are still discussing Ariana's motion.
Yeah, but you had sort of moved over my way.
Clearly.
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I just. I feel really awkward about having one of the members of the board. Be putting things on our website, I just like, I don't like that, I think it is.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
But you said in the, you said the Facebook group, so the trustees are the ones who put information on that website.
You know what I mean? Well, we all do, we all do, right, but, but, we, well, we all have equal access, so I mean theoretically, maybe if we all had equal access to that.
We all have, we all have that equal access to that.
I could be, that could be one way of doing it.
But is, isn't it true though, that if we do the temporary website and three people have, can put things up, that you can ask the clerk to put up whatever you want on it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Theoretically, yes.
So what's the difference?
What is it?
If we're, if we're allowed to request things of the employees, then yes.
But as long as we can do that, what's the difference?
Of, of course, we, since when.
Well.
You always be blocking able to.
Well, because Stuart, because.
We'll make it part of the motion.
I knew that.
Well, because.
Yeah, right, we'll make it.
Part of it is. Uh, the way I view the website as being an extension of the clerk's office, an extension of. Information portrayal to the public and I don't feel that. Uh, any one particular member of our board should have access to that unless everyone does or unless no one does. Because it's, it's something about in, information dissemination and everyone having like equal footing under that, you know what I mean?
Well, I see what you mean. But if they for consolidation, Ariana and Stuart have stuff to put up.
And you know it's a principle thing? Right, sure.
Then they would give it to the clerk.
I give it to the clerk, she'll put it on there.
I give it on, so I don't understand what the problem is.
Yeah.
If what you say is true, then what's the problem?
It just means I wouldn't be able to help.
Or we could all help, or you can make, you can make a lot of, give all of them.
Yeah, but you don't, so, well, that's not, you don't show up to, yeah, I'm not gonna be on that.
But if that's, but if that's an option that's on the table that appeals to the board and you have consensus, then it works.
Okay, we're getting into. I think we're getting dangerous.
Consensus, then it works.
Okay, I think we're getting into.
Private result?
This whole argument of management rights versus admin, I mean, policy of rights versus administration.
Right.
You don't need to judge, you need to judge.
And so I don't wanna go there at the moment, let's vote on Ariana's motion and then we'll vote.
Wait, 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 so does everyone feel?
I called the question, which means an immediate vote and whether to end the debate.
If you have a second.
If I have a second, is there a second? Which means it would immediately, if it passes, it would go to voting on this without any further discussion, on Ariana's motion, not Sally's proposal.
No, it's not my proposal, it's Ariana's.
I know, I know, I was, I was, I was saying, nevermind, I called the question on whether we should execute the revised contract immediately.
Okay.
Is there a second to that, to end debate on that topic?
I'll, I'll second it.
So, all in favor of, all in favor, all in favor of ending debate on the question.
I will, I'm not buying in debate.
End of debate, no.
Raise your hand if you're all in favor of ending debate, no, alright, who's next?
Okay, so, um, what do you think would be a good deadline for January, what are we thinking? Can everyone agree on the, the deadline?
That's not part of her motion, she, you gotta vote on her motion first, if you wanna do mine.
We're just, it's discussion of how it is though, we still have, we still have the ability to just execute this contract.
We're, we're discussing. I, I can, I can withdraw my motion if we came to a consent, some kind of compromise.
Right.
I did not withdraw it, but I still can.
Right.
Well, will you withdraw and I, Stuart and I will make the motion that I made and Stuart reiterated.
Well, I'm not ready to withdraw it, because I'm not happy with a compromise yet.
Right, Brian's still fleshing out the fact of the compromise.
Right.
Yeah, if, if we flush out a compromise that I'm happy with, I will withdraw my motion, I'm not doing so until then.
I'm not going to discuss another motion that has, is not even on the table to let you decide whether to withdraw, that is parliamentary, not in order.
I don't know, I think it's part of the discussion, so if not, we'll just decide to execute the contract and then whatever, but if we can come to a better agreement, then we'll choose to withdraw our motion.
No, it is not.
It's out of order.
That's what. That's what I was going to do with my motion, please second.
It's her motion.
That's what my original motion was again to do.
Can we just finish discussing this and then we can, and then we can withdraw the motion?
Brian was just looking for a date.
I'm just, I'm looking for a date and I'm looking for the mayor to give us the, uh, password to go.
I think Sally, Sally had proposed the, the third meeting in January.
I think it is.
You're saying third meeting in January?
Yes, I did.
Will you give us the login information to it?
I'm gonna talk to Joe after the meeting.
I don't, what, what is the login?
Because those are two questions on unrelated topics.
What's the login information?
You would, the, the third.
The login information to the temporary website.
Well, that's not, the village doesn't own that yet, that's mine, and if the, if we turn it over, then yes, probably, if that's, if it's what's, what the law requires, then yeah.
You have to turn it over.
So, so.
No, no, I won't even go along with this unless you agree to do that, because that's not a temporary website, really.
And I'm, and I can't, and I, and like, and like this, I can't, I can't, I don't, unlike many others, I don't like making decisions on bad or incomplete information.
Okay, so we're gonna have to. Okay.
I need more information on lots of it.
I'm like all this, oh, I love doing that, um, so wait, maybe we should just make our own temporary website and put, put up all the information, cause that would be just as easy. And then it's, and then it's only owned by the village, we could, we could make a motion to have the clerk's department open up a temporary website, we'll just, no, it's his own, well.
I thought, I thought that what Jason was doing is the temporary.
It's his website.
But it's all, it's his own personal website that he said he wants to make a temporary.
Right now, and I'll give over.
Who, you're saying you're not gonna make, see, why can't you just? Make a concession and agree with all of us and then we could, and then we could say, okay, you'll give over the website, you'll give us all the password, we'll give you till. The third meeting in January, we'll wait in the revise, and then everyone compromises and we all get along, instead of like, ooh, ooh, like, you know, it's, it's unnecessary.
Because I want, because I wanna talk to Brian Macaluso about internet security, I wanna talk about how our, our passwords are stored, I wanna talk about. To people who know, who have thought about this and not at the last second, again badly thought out, just to, I don't know. Get all this on TV for you all is what you seem to be enjoying doing.
Not really, no.
No, I'm miserable with this right now, I wish we could get along.
Cause you could have solved the problem, but we didn't.
Yeah, I wanna talk to Samson.
I thought. And I still think. You said we could go with a temporary website.
We can.
And we could put all the village information on.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We can if it belongs to you personally.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like me to answer the question?
Yes.
Brian asked me, the second question Brian asked, was whether I would get, the first one was about a date for the thing. The second question Brian asked was, will I give the passwords out for the site that I own to all the trustees? Now, the only question I heard answered was, um. Of, a conversation about how that might be a good idea, I don't remember having a conversation, Joe, am I misremembering you, whether that's. Something that's done, I don't know.
I, I'm, I'm not, I don't understand the question.
I don't really know, I really wanna, I, I wanna think about it more.
The, with what in particular, I'm not sure what, what you're asking me.
Just having all the trustees, all the village board have access to change of those website at any time, day or night.
I think.
It sounds like a, honest face, it sounds like a bad idea.
Yeah, well, a bad idea is what you guys are in charge of, in other words, you have good ideas, bad ideas, and you vote on them. So that, and really, and I mean that sincerely, that's, I'm, I won't advise you on whether it's a good or bad idea, I do not think it's an illegal idea.
Right.
Sure.
You, you know what I mean, so that's where, and, and.
We're not supposed to legal.
No.
Right, um, I do, uh, no, I mean, that's it, so I'll shut up about that.
Okay, so let's just start our own temporary village website very easily on WordPress, we can have the clerk's office do it, and then we don't have to worry about it, and then she could be the one to administrate it. And then I'm sure Jason will just put the password anyway, but at least it'll be ours and then he can do what he wants to do anyway, cause that's what he's gonna do. And then, you know, so then.
That sounds, that sounds kind of petty and difficult to work.
No, I don't like the tenor of this.
Neither do I.
Neither do I.
I know, so let's, let's act like grownups and figure this out.
Wish all would just.
Jason.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem supporting a temporary website, which sounds to me like a solution for all. What we need to get done before the real website is finished. It needs to belong to the village.
It would.
It will?
Yeah, whatever temporary site is gonna be owned by the village and under the control of Brian Macaluso, to, well, for the tech end, the security end. The content will be under the control of Katie. And the one I have set up now, I have control and Alberta has control.
Okay. Will you turn over whatever that is? I mean, I may, I may be asking something that's not theoretically possible, the temporary website that you've been working on, you've been talking about. That we could all put information on, are you prepared to return, turn that over to the village tomorrow morning?
What do you mean by the village?
That, that it would be available to the village.
To the trustees?
Well, I could never use.
Wait, wait, hold, I wanna, I wanna make sure that.
Well, that's one of my, I, I'm asking what village.
Yeah, wait, wait, when you, when you say, when you say available tomorrow, do you mean accessible by the public, do you mean?
Would we get the pass?
Under the control of village staff or I have emailed out the, eh, uh, account or set of accounts and passwords, or whatever, however you do it, for the board? Because if it's, if it's any of the, if it's, if it's, I can't have it up so fast that people could check for information tomorrow. It could be under the control of Brian Macaluso Texas tomorrow, I'm uncomfortable giving control, editorial control to the entire board before speaking with the IT consultant who we hire. To advise on things like this.
But why, cause if I, if I made the Facebook for all of us to do and we all, we've, we've set boundaries to what we are allowed to post, and it's not personal stuff, it's only stuff related to the.
That would be huge.
And I'm not even, I don't know, but we said, we, we set a policy, remember, I, I brought it to the board, we set the internet policy about posting things to our, our village things that are personal.
You don't think.
I don't find out.
And I never knew.
I don't even wanna post it, but I just feel like if, if you have access to post, then I just want access, I don't care if, I'm never gonna post anything, I just want the access.
Yeah, and the fact that you don't wanna give us access shows that you're responsible.
Makes me even want it in the board.
Look at the agenda, tonight's agenda is a show trial for me, and I've said, that aside, and the whole tenor for the whole rest of the night, cause the rest of it's gonna be just like this. Until three in the morning, our goddamn longer here, but as I said over and over, and it's the same reason for revise and actually the same thing for consolidation, I want to know what I'm talking about before I agree. And I want to make sure it's not a hard question to ask, but I'm not gonna call Brian right now and find out, I wanna talk to somebody who's used to dealing with.
Large multimillion dollar organizations and their IT infrastructure, I want to understand the best way to do this, we've been working on it as it's a hierarchy is usually the best. If Brian says there's no problem having whatever, or there's, I don't know, I don't, this is not my field, I I want, as usual, is time to find out more information, don't interrupt me Sally, please don't interrupt me.
If Jason. Jason, no. What I think is wrong here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It isn't about you having more time. You're not hearing them. You're not hearing what they're saying to you.
Then, okay, then translate it for me.
Okay, the translation is. They're looking for a compromise with you, they're trying to compromise, you've gotta move there too, it can't be just your way.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. I'm I'm not asking for that, I'm really not, I'm really not.
Yeah, J- J- Jason.
Yes, you are.
Jason, believe me. You need to be able to say you will call Brian tomorrow morning, that you will in fact determine. Whatever accessibility we're talking about to the temporary site, the temporary site will belong to the village.
To, I'll do whatever whatever Joe legally and Brian uh whatever on the uh uh Macaluso uh for policy wise says, I really don't care that much.
To the extent that the question is about security. I I mean, I I don't even know how to weigh in on that, I mean, I suppose it's a reasonable question, and even if Jason agreed tonight, I I would still. Say that he'd have to have a conversation with Brian about how to make that secure, I don't know what the issues are, but it's a reasonable concern.
Right.
I agree.
So in other words, I mean, Jason, I guess what I'm saying to you is you could potentially agree tonight, subject to having a conversation to make sure that it's so that it's secure.
Sure. That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
The other issue of, I mean, one place that I might go with this is, I think what is being talked about here. Is just that the site be no no less. Village, whatever that temporary site is, that it have the access and that it be no less village. Uh owned and controlled than would be the site revised would develop would design.
Mm-hmm.
I I think what I'm hearing primarily is that it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a personal site, and I don't think that that was your intention, but but what you're saying is that right now it's owned by you, so so that's fine.
That's what you're saying. That but that's what.
No, that's.
In other word, and I don't know the answer to this actually, but but in if revised by, if somebody designed a website for us right now.
Yes.
For the village, like even our current website.
Right, right.
Who who has that happen, what's the access now?
I don't, do you have the access to the actual village website?
No, I don't either.
The clerk does.
The clerk does, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying.
Okay, so, no, no, so that, so what I'm, so I think it may maybe the best way to approach this is to say that that if we, if the board authorizes a temporary website, that that website will be.
Yeah.
Will will have the access and will be administered in the same manner.
As the current website.
As the current, as a current website.
Right.
With the same. Access, the same policy of board members saying to Katie, please post this, I mean, nothing would really change, and that's what you're looking for.
Is replacing that we have, but Jason's.
Exactly, exactly, except except that currently, there's one extra person who has access to the site.
I'm I mean, I don't wanna, okay. To the current site, to the current, current site, no, no, but that's, but but we're past.
It's temporary, why would I want to turn it over?
Turn it over.
I don't care if I turn it over.
He says he's gonna turn it over.
Right, what what.
Then they're gonna change the passwords tomorrow?
But what will you do on Saturday nights?
What I'm saying though is that if you were gonna.
Make some analysis, make drones the sewer system.
If you were going to authorize this tonight, I'm just suggesting that those would be your parameters, that A.
Uh.
Yeah.
Jason would say, yes, it will create a site that's owned by the village, that it will have all the same accesses and administration policies that the current po, you know, site has.
Control of the website.
Then I think you're covered.
I I think the key point is to me, is not that I have access to the site, cause I don't care if I do, but that if I present something to the clerk.
That she can put it on.
It's, she has to put it on, I mean, unless it's illegally, but.
Correct. I agree.
All right.
I I've never refused to put something on.
No, no, I'm just, I know, that's, it's not about you, okay, so is that if that's part of it, so what's what's the big deal, I don't care about if I have access to anything, I just want if I have something I wanna put on official business, they give it to the clerk and it gets on there, that's.
Hey, hey.
Okay. Yeah.
Hey. Stay out, okay.
That's my worry, because we're we're behind on things we wanna put up.
Yes.
And so if that happens, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so. So I, you're exactly in the ballpark, I believe.
On the.
Are we all able to buy into this, what Joe said, what, you know, he he, what he did was he took Stuart's and my proposal and he refined it. Okay? And then come the third meeting in January. We will have a recommendation from the mayor. Well, that's a workshop, we can't, unless we say tonight.
No, you said the third, it, cause we got consolidation workshop and the, so either workshop or regular, whichever one is, cause consolidation is good.
Which are. But if we do workshop, we have to agree that we can act on this. At workshop.
You can.
Well, yeah, but we have been on the board, you say can't, if we agree, we'll do it second.
Third one.
I know, I'm just telling you that you can, if you like, you don't have to. Okay.
All right. Second meeting in January, the mayor will have for us a proposal.
With timeline, with timelines and information.
Huh? Well, we're, a general timeline, as to when the real website. Will be up.
Through, through SharePoint, will could be up.
Could be up through SharePoint or and that we. Dump this, or we go with this, because this will be faster, and then we can, now is that satisfactory to you?
Or we go with that. Right.
Right.
And and. With some.
Ideally, it'd be a side by side if that's possible.
With some, with some financial analysis, this is gonna cost us fifty three hundred, the other one's free, except we have to hire consolidation or blah blah blah.
Right. Right, but we we've already budgeted for this, so that's that's not as, we don't have to.
No, they see, no, to compare, to compare.
No, he meant, he meant the other one, that we don't, when we say free, we're clear there's no cash cost, but maybe a time cost or something cost.
All right. All right. Are we, Ariana, can you live with this? Will you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, may we move the motion, Katie, do you have it, are you clear on it?
I'm clear.
I I have one thing to add, and I don't wanna add time, and you don't need me for this, right now, and I was about, I was gonna write this email tomorrow because I just got confirmation. I. Cannot be at the third meeting next week.
I don't think we need to.
I don't think so either, and I'm, but I'm only saying I think I could be at the fourth, now that adds a week to your timeline, I don't wanna do that, and I don't think you need me, you shouldn't need me like that, but, okay.
But, let me just say this. Okay, if we need you, we're all in trouble.
And I'll come to the fourth meeting anyway, I mean, I'm gonna meet my obligation, I'm just saying I can't be at the third one.
I think you're gonna get, you're you're gonna review this for Jason long before that meeting, I am sure, and we will have it in bed, ready to go, one way or the other.
I wanna hear the motion.
That's a.
All right. The motion is.
Well, no, no, I'll, Katie, turn back the motion.
I don't know that she has it.
Well, you just made it, so hopefully.
Okay, see if she's got it with everything Joe has in it.
My understanding is that the mo, my understanding of the motion is that you are moving to allow the temporary website um until the second meeting in January. Where Jason will come with a proposed timeline of how long it would take to get SharePoint up and running, and that there will be some kind of financial financial analysis of comparing the costs of the.
Okay, may to amend the first part of that to incorporate that the temporary website is to be administered.
Wait, 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 wait.
In the same manner as the current website. Okay?
With the same.
Qualifiers.
Access. Um. And protections.
Turn it over to the village.
Right, that'll be owned by the village and have the same access and protections as the president's.
And I wanna take, and to the end of that thing, that recognizing the temporary website was developed by the mayor. And proprietary rights or whatever we call them, belonged to him.
This is what I have to, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, I don't think you need that, because this would be a new.
Also, why would I want it?
Well.
No, I don't think, I I I know what you're trying to do, but I don't, I don't think you need it.
Yeah, I know what I'm trying to.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Though there was one thing at the end too, Katie, that I think in addition, there would, it was also gonna be a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
At that time. As to whether whether to go forward with revise or not.
Revise.
Or share, whatever.
For the consideration of.
Okay.
He has the financial part and the timeline part.
Right.
I need second.
I will second that.
Thank you.
One point of discussion is, are we going to redirect village of newpaltz.org? Or are we going to post a link from like on village of newpaltz.org at like the top of the page, saying, this is our temporary web page, please click here for all documents?
We'll need to, we'll need to archive and save the set we have now, cause we wouldn't want two sites, or info, no, I'm sorry, I'm confused now.
So it's like, like, we can either redirect, like, when you type in village of newpaltz.org, we can either redirect to the temporary website, or we can keep temporary website.
Oh, we can't, I realize we can't do that if you want access, at all, because if I gave anyone the password, you'd have access to all the blogs now.
Well, they've said that, yeah, no, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Well, we've we've already just decided that not not any of the five of us, including yourself, are going to have the password, so I think if we, if we just keep the agency control.
No, I don't really have access.
Well, he will, no, 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 because because it's under.
Until I turn it over to Brian, I, it's on my, the generic every all the other blogs, I need to, that's, I need to talk to Brian, I don't know what can actually pull.
Right, right. Right. It's like his account with like several websites on there.
Yeah.
So then why don't we have a completely different account?
How much, did you put a lot of stuff on there yet, really?
This is almost ten o'clock at night, we're gonna keep going with this for a while, huh?
I'm I'm asking a question.
The end.
Jason, why can't, why can't you just answer the question?
The end result has to be, this is, this is what Jason has to follow up with Brian about tomorrow, and if you adopt the motion that's on the table now.
Because it should have happened here.
The, what it will mean is that however it has to work, whether it's turning over the existing site, creating a new site, the end result will have to be a site. Owned by the village.
That's correct.
With with only, with the restrictions, the same restrictions and access as the current site, right, right.
That none of us will have access to it, yes.
That's the result, and what Jason I think is saying is he's gotta talk to Brian about how you do that, because either turn it over or open it up on you, but he'll have to do it.
I I I don't, I understand that, yes.
And that expectation has to happen tomorrow.
And and, well, yes, if you adopt this motion, that's the end result, it has to be the site that looks and sounds like the one we just.
And and that will be the case before it goes live.
And and this is why I'm exhausted, Ariana, because if anyone would like to see anything that I put on other one, I just sent you all.
I know, I've looked at.
I couldn't get to it.
I changed it and I sent an email following up, where I I changed it, well, then I didn't get a response.
People. I looked at it and I saw all your, all yours, your laws from when you were working with Spencer, that's what was up there when I looked at it.
Yes.
Please just live our experience.
I mean, I I don't have, I don't have a problem with this, I just, I just want, I just want this to be clarified, because I want it to be explicit, because when we.
No, you got it, your motion, you got it.
In the future, moving forward, if any of this isn't met or any of us aren't happy with it, like, I want it to be explicit, that this is what we agreed to at this meeting, because clearly we have communication problems.
Right. Right.
So if you have a problem with me being detail oriented and explicit with this, I'm sorry.
Does not, no, I have a problem with asking for comments repeatedly by email, getting nothing, except this.
This, all right.
Where, where, all right, so forget that, I cannot, where I cannot possibly answer every question.
No, my question to you is, are you going to talk to Brian about this and relinquish your ability to access this, are you going to say, no, I have access to this?
When, yeah, you can touch, say yes, yes.
Well, tomorrow. You're gonna talk to Brian tomorrow.
I would, you know, if I can hold Brian, I'm talking tomorrow.
Okay, good.
There's a certain point at which you don't get to control the minute of every day here, like, there's a difference in doing this and.
No, but you just.
I wanna promise though, I, that's what I'm asking for.
All right, let's say by December twenty sixth, the temporary website will be up and running.
As the guide will be up.
Okay, period, the end.
And in the control of the website.
That gives us the time, please amend by December twenty, by end business of December twenty sixth.
Well, well, how is she gonna have this?
What, what on earth is that, is this motion?
So bad, what?
In one sentence, can someone please make the motion?
I.
It did.
No, that was a paragraph and a half.
Who the walk sentence, I I think maybe we should, we should break it into a few separate motions, no, okay.
Katie.
Yeah.
So, no, Katie, you're the clerk, it's you're, it's gonna be your writing, what's the motion that's on the floor now?
My understanding of the motion.
Not your understanding, you need to tell, you know, tell us.
Well, I have it written down, and I will be fact checking tomorrow, I should, and I have it correct.
There you go. Thank you, there you go, you need to tell us what the motion is on the record, and we can change it if you like.
Is it Sally's moving?
Oh, thank you.
That the temporary, that the current, that there, she's authorizing a temporary website that would be administered the same as the current website with the same accesses and protections. It would be turned over to the vi- village with a recommendation of, which would then follow up with the uh second meeting in January. A recommendation from the mayor, whether or not we should move forward with SharePoint or with revise, and with uh the caveat that there would be the consideration. Of um the finance, not only which site is better, but the financial aspect, the financial comparison of the two.
Right, and the only thing.
Time and timeline.
And timeline, I do have to.
For implementing it.
And the only thing you have to add to that that Sally just mentioned, is when you have your words there about make a recommendation.
Katie.
There's no trust on for.
I'm sorry, about authorizing the temporary website, what Sally just added was that by December twenty sixth, that would be accomplished.
It must move forward.
Could I add one more thing to it?
No, it's not, and that we have agreed that the board will be allowed to vote at a workshop meeting, because we're doing this the second, I don't want anybody saying.
Right.
I won't make a stink about it, I promise, so.
No stinks by anybody.
So wait, who's who's second did this, no one, oh, I did, I did, okay, may I add a friendly amendment?
I did. Right.
I would prefer that we don't redirect the village website to this, but we post at like the top of the page, around to the picture, a link to it and saying. For any document, for any recent documentation, you you could pick out the word, but for any recent documentation, please click here, this is our temporary website until we reconfigure, you can, you can.
Then it not automatically redirect, but that there be a link to it.
That there's a link to it at the top of the page, clearly posted.
Yes.
As the clerk, can I ask for clar- clarification on one thing?
Yeah.
What exactly, it, you're just asking for the authorization for the website, you're not expecting all of this information to be loaded.
No, no.
Because that that's the.
You can't have both, Brian.
Right, the website is.
Well, you can't have both of what you just said.
The the website is to be live, what, by the December twenty sixth.
Right. What do you say, I can't have both of them?
Um, if you want to be completely, Sally, I'm sorry, let me answer the question, if um, you want to be completely under control of the village, you can't redirect, cause if it does, it's gonna redirect to the WordPress account owned by me.
You'll let your team with this, I guess.
So if we want it, the whole point was to take the village of newpaltz URL, make this direct to this, I I, this is where I'm, I don't really, I need to talk to Macaluso, I, because.
Like, can you pull that and put it on a different WordPress?
You must be, that's, I, but it's a conversation, I, that's the thing, I can't, I don't know, this is what I need to work on these things for.
Okay, I mean, that's, that is what I.
It it could be, you could make, you may not be allowed both, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
You'll let him know if he can.
It's, yeah, as soon as I know.
Okay.
Cause I I would prefer it that way, just because we have stuff on our current website, and like why I have to take all that down.
Well, every, cause I looked through, there's not much that's actually accurate left, so I I started cutting and pasting all this stuff, it was still actually accurate, and it was a shorter, most, a lot of the subpages are.
Really?
I know, a lot of it is outdated, this is true, um, you know, like, like, things are not up to date, but but there is still information on there, with links to forms and.
Or that are condensable. Right, and that's what I was going for, yeah.
You know, and I and I think we should definitely still have it up, and we should have, we should have a different.
Right, unless unless for some reason it's impossible, I would prefer that, and Sally, do you accept that friendly?
Oh, um, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I I mean, I think if it, if for whatever reason it's not possible, then we would just need to create a new WordPress under some village category, yeah.
Look, Jason said he did the.
Yeah, he said, ah, cool.
Can we vote?
Yes.
Depends, is there one then? You sure you got the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, and we're gonna have a five minute recess.
Oh, I love that idea.
Um, we've been doing it every meeting for a year, let's, can we not argue?
I claim the bathroom first. All right.
Nope.
New year, no recesses.
Justin, yes, we did.
You got that thing on a break now.
You're doing good, I appreciate that.
I took the volume off the office.
You can just try, you can just.
You wanna go?
If someone's willing, that we want.
No.
I want a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
That's how walkers start walks.
I'm just.
I I watched the view at least three times before the minute to hand it in, and then. We, if it's.
Katie, where?
I'm sorry.
What?
Security on camera, this.
I want you to stop in the chat.
Yeah, pretty well, please.
Uh, all right, so Brian Grove Street is your, do you have the control on that?
Yeah, thank you to Sally and Ariana for get figuring this out, um. So apparently the Grove Street um and uh Oakwood Streets are property of the DOT, and we have to request. That they remove the spots, um, so I'm gonna. I would like to make a motion to rescind um. Uh, the motion passed on ten twenty four twelve regarding the parking spaces uh on Main Street and the intersections of Grove and Oakwood.
I'll second, cause I voted for it.
Can I do this question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would like to make a motion to request the mayor write a letter to the DOT to remove the five spots total. Um, two spaces on the east and west side of Grove Street, located on Main Street, the north side of Main Street. And two spaces east and west of Oakwood Terrace on Main Street, uh on the north side, and one located on the south side of Oakwood Terrace. Uh, I I I believe it's on the uh east side of the street, but I'm not, uh, yes, it is on the east side of the street.
Second. Second.
Discussion?
Do you have an issue with writing this letter?
No, okay. We probably already have a template somewhere.
He writes it on the app of the board.
On behalf of.
Yeah, 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 uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question for Joe. Joe, I know that we have lots of things in the cooker. On the parking plan that I sent you saying that I realized that we had things and that could take a back burner. How far back burner?
I could.
For the immediate ones?
I could have that ready for next time I'm with you, then that.
Really, okay.
For the immediate ones, I mean, I'll, I'll correspond with you about which.
Alright.
Okay, the one, the one other thing, uh, is Sally, you said that all the spots in the village have numbers. Wi- within the code, or is that Ariana telling me that? Is that, is that correct?
We have to leave the code alone because it's, the code is, and and Joe could tell us, but the code apparently. Is based on state law, so like you have to say every road that has a stop sign or a yield sign. We can't.
Well.
Consolidate.
Well, no, what I'm saying is if there are, if there is something legally we have to draw up, so if the DOT. If the DOT approves doing this, if we have to change.
No, it's out of our hands.
It's completely out of our hands. They'll do it all. And then what about our village code? How does that, how will that be amended if they decide to do that?
It doesn't get amended, it's a state road and you're requesting them to do it.
State roads, state code.
Do it and it has nothing to do with our code.
Okay.
That right.
Isn't that nice?
That is, that's, it's great.
Saves us some time.
Well, okay.
Or something. So then we can converse, the three of us, and then we'll get back to Blue on what Joe is there.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so good.
That sounds good.
Alright.
Okay, um, next is agenda on my list.
I think I mentioned that.
Yeah, that's, that's done.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, Joe, sorry.
I think I mentioned that. But it wasn't, then right, I said it, I thought that the whole concept of agenda and putting things on agenda was. On the agenda, but we decided.
Oh, so not, oh, so my, I misunderstood, then I'm sorry, so my mistake.
So the agen- our agenda rules stand.
Conversation, yeah, yeah.
Right, our agenda rules stand.
Right.
And they are confirmed by our attorney.
Right, and that's in my memo.
And that's in his memo.
And if there's always any rules change we want, we can propose them.
Right.
That's right.
Do the normal change.
Okay.
Uh, bus shelters, um.
Um, yeah, back in uh, May, we had this on the agenda and we had in front of us. Um, an agreement with the county to, that we were going to be receiving these bus shelters from them. Um, a drafted contract from Joe, uh, for easements with the property owners. And a drafted letter that was um, written by myself and Jonathan Wright and vetted by the TIC. And then us, we approved moving forward with all of these things. Um, and I was waiting and I I had checked with the insurance company with Nancy, through Nancy. Um, regarding the insurance policy and it would, and they said that it would be under a hundred dollars more. Um, in our policy per year. Um, today I spoke with Blue and Nick about this. Um, I mean, I've been waiting on confirmation that they would be able to maintain this. But um, you know, since I don't know if we have DPW meetings anymore or what goes on with that, I'm not invited to them even though I used to be, um.
You don't, they can, it'll be redundant.
Alright, well, eh, regardless, um. That used to be something that was going to happen monthly and I thought I'd be able to ask there and since that was not going on, I was finally able to ask today. And they said that it would be, eh, that this would not be a problem, um, of maintenance for them or installation of them. And uh, and that we can look into budgeting for it for two thousand third, for this upcoming budget. And that they could be installed this summer, um, and I think the number was thirty six hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred for everything, right?
Twelve hundred per.
In the budget.
Per, yeah, per bus shelter. Yeah, and and we're, I mean, it, we definitely have two, there were three. There was a talk of three, but I think the third was gonna go to town for the new Paul Tooth Program.
Do we have the agreement of the property owners to do it?
We, that's, that's exactly, I was waiting on the confirmation with, because Chris Stewart so kindly had provided me with a list of questions. That he had the first time this came around, when it was on his property, that this was being proposed. Um, and so one of the questions was in terms of maintenance and insulation and insurance. Um, and having it, having that commitment from the DPW was really important before we approached the property owners. So now that is finally the step I can take now that I have this commitment. Um, and Brian was so kind to say that he would want to do this with me, as was Kurt, so Kurt said that he would like to. Be involved in approaching the property owners, so I figure we can send them a le- send that, send this letter, but. I I guess now that's my question for the board is, you know, I mean, we, we had approved moving forward with that letter, um. Who sent it? Do I send it? Does it go on Bill's letterhead? Does Katie send it, like?
It should go on Bill's letterhead.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I agree in that with that, but I don't have Bill's letterhead.
If you can do that, we have it as a template, so we can email to Katie, she can print that out on a paper if you're coming.
Okay, my, I'm, I'm only asking this because I would have thought that all of that would have happened when we voted on it. But none of it happened, so that's why I'm asking, is it my job to do it? Because I'm happy to do it if it's my job to do it. I just assumed that once the board votes on it, it becomes admini- adminis- administration work. Um, and since it hadn't happened, I wanna make sure that it's not my job to do it.
I don't know, cause I don't remember the details.
I just give you all the details.
I know, but. You gave a lot of details, I don't remember the ones, all the ones at the beginning, but you know.
Let's just.
So what is it that, we need the, the letter to go out to the property owners? I mean, usu- usually, usually if we need something like that, if it's something simple, uh, the clerk or someone would draft it, but.
It's already drafted.
Then, yeah, then.
We already vetted it, so did the TIC.
So I don't know why it can go out, so we just need to send it out under, over who's, who's signature.
Okay.
Either, either one. Either, wha- whatever title is appropriate, you as the, like, ped, whatever title is appropriate.
On it.
Yeah, so good, perfect.
Okay.
I could, I I would suggest it should go out under the village board. The village board is asking. Somebody to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, I think the TIC would like to, like to show that it is also. Because it was, it's.
It shows support of the project.
Yeah, I mean, the village board's vote. Is, is the teeth behind it in any event, it, I mean, I, I, it, it almost doesn't matter.
Well.
Write it.
But if I got a letter from Ariana.
Yeah.
Alone, I might.
I might ignore it and throw it out.
But if it did, the village board and it has the mayor's signature, I think it has more.
That's fine, I mean, I, it makes sense.
I'll send it wherever you need to.
Okay, well, I mean. This is a problem because it didn't already happen, so you saying that doesn't just, you know. Do you want, do you want me to resend it to you?
So we'll give.
Well, I don't know if I have a copy, so.
Well, everybody has it, cause it was in our packets back in May when we voted on it.
So.
Boil it out and send it again.
Send it to the clerk's office and ask the clerk to have the mayor autograph it when he swings through. And then she can send it out on our behalf.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
No.
No, because we already did this.
Okay. Katie, you all right with that? Great.
Now we're.
Voicemail.
Well, I've left you two, so I know we can leave voicemails now. I don't know if you've gotten either one.
I've gotten, yeah.
I would appreciate you returning phone call, thank you.
Is that why you want us in the agenda?
No, it was because we had gotten complaints from the community that people were not able to leave you messages because your voicemail box was full. And that was a problem that I had approached you about back in June.
Cause it happens once in a while?
Well, it's apparently it happened consecutive, consecutively for throughout a month. Um.
I I call you fairly regularly and for a while have not been able to leave voicemail. Until recently, which I've left you two in the last few days.
Yeah, but we're all very glad that, that's, that it's open and operational again.
Yes.
Well, I'm impressed that this is something you feel is, is pressing public business to bring.
It is when the public is complaining to us about it.
Right, and I mean, the public should be able to get in touch the full time mayor.
I brought this up to you.
They can in many, many ways.
I brought this up to you in private when it was my problem. I bring it up to you in public when it's a public problem. When it's been, when it was brought to me at the TIC meeting, sorry, because of the bus shelter issue that Gail could not get in touch with you regarding.
Gail has my cell phone, that's how she calls me.
But you should be.
Almost everyone has my cell phone.
Well, listen.
But you should be in the office.
This was a TIC meeting and.
See this right here, this is called a show trial, what you two are doing on camera, waiting for an answer that could be simply dealt with before.
If you want to, but look.
Call you at all, it'd be really nice.
Look.
Yeah, and and I called you today and when I call your cell phone, it tells me that this AT and T wireless subscriber is not available. Because you have blocked my cell phone number, so if I can't leave you a voicemail and you don't return my calls from the voicemail, then that's a problem.
This again is what I.
I'm invoking the harassment policy, the discussion is now over.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry, before you invoke the harassment policy, I think it is fair to ask that. The person that we're having administer the village on full time basis.
That's a fair question.
In a very respectful way, I'm, I'm just wanna keep very respectful.
Okay.
We ask that you're reachable by the public via your office phone. Please, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Interesting agenda, I think it's coming up in the next few months. Department head reports is the last thing.
See, now is that harassment? You wanna point that one out?
Department head reports, uh, I, well, I'll start this one because it'll cut off a minute of, of argument at least. Um, there was uh, about a month and a half ago. Um, excuse me, Brian, um, about a month and a half ago.
Oh, no, you're not excused, go on.
Wow, okay, um.
But a month and a half ago, you told the department heads not to send out emails. Or not send out the department head report, not send the department head reports out to the trustees until they realize. To see if they're paying attention. Then we realized and.
Brian, just let me finish this.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, please, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The point is, is yes, about a month, six weeks ago, I got several reports from department heads that complaining that trustees weren't reading the, uh. The reports and.
Regularly.
The, um. Which was, wouldn't that necessarily have been an issue, um, they said, well, specifically it was. S- uh, some questions that were on the, on TV, I think someone reached out to them about two or three thing, I don't know the details.
Yeah.
But they were frustrated because they didn't wanna write them in the first place, uh, and the trustees are the ones who meet them, um. So it seemed the, the staff was frustrated because it seemed that they were reading these reports and spending time and they weren't even being read. And in my experience, having just prior to that, had Stuart, Ariana and Brian all three tell me that they did not read all the emails I've sent. Um, and didn't read all the reports they, they got.
Emails were harassing the content.
And, well, not the ones calling you out on things, Brian, I meant the informational ones that were just updated on.
That, that.
Brian, really?
I'm sorry, go ahead, no, please.
No, are you done? I don't know, I'll, I'll listen to what you're saying and then laugh when I feel it's appropriate, go on.
I think this is all inappropriate.
I agree.
And what I would like to say about building reports. I recognize that this board is having interpersonal prob- problems among itself. I recognize that. However, I will not, as a board member, tolerate. Staff being intimidated or bullied or anything else because we all aren't getting along. That's my only comment on all of this. I know we've had problems getting. Department reports, some of it has been just a breakdown on emails. Katie has fixed mine so that now I can get them. But my concern is that I don't want any of our staff. Or employees. Being put in a position where they feel intimidated or in the middle. Of our inability to work together. I wanna make that very clear.
Yes, I agree completely, one hundred percent, and I, and I think the reason for bringing it up is because that is exactly what happened.
Well, it's not, and so to finish my story, um. When I got the reports that, uh, it was possible that trustees were not reading the reports that were being sent and the staff, uh, the departments were upset at the cost and time. That that would mean, um, it wasn't something I could come right and out, write and ask, because I don't trust that anyone would tell me, n- no, I don't read them. So what I said, the, what I said, well, no, many of you don't, um.
Many of us, I don't know who you're talking about, because I read every single one.
Well, good, and actually you're the reason that, that, that changed, was because what I said to the staff was, um. Okay, you're saying to me, they're not reading them, you don't wanna write them, so send them to me. And I'll, I'll see who says first and notices if they're missing. As soon as someone says that they, that they, they don't have it, we'll start that again. And it was a test to see whether people were reading it. I think it was a week later, immediately you contacted me, you emailed me.
You within the weed.
Yeah, and.
I asked you about it at a board meeting, you lied to my face. I asked you about it again.
I don't, don't do that again, ever.
Also lies my face to that point. You told me, I don't know where they are, I'll look into it.
Cause I didn't remember what you were talking about, and then I emailed.
Something you dictated again, you didn't remember.
You can't even listen to answer, I'm like.
Cause you're such a liar, so ridiculous.
Listen, I also spoke with Kathy about it and, and the whole, she puts them all in a binder and that, and the public can come see them. This is transparency in government, it is not just for the trustees, this is something for the public as well, and it's very important for that reason as well, so.
I'm glad to read them.
And, yeah, and I do read them, and I think that it, that they should be in effect, whether or not we read them, because it's not just about the trustees. It's about the public as well. It's about anybody being able to walk into any of our departments and know what's going on. Imagine if we just came into, came into office and these were going on, we'd be able to have an update of the last six months. This is not just for the trustees, regardless of whether or not we read them, and I think it's completely wrong for you to put the staff in between us and you.
I, I had the, I asked the department heads to write these reports as. The four, the four of you, that's the only reason they exist. Cause we had a meeting, it was after, I think in executive session, no one is here or something, cause we're sitting on different parts of the table. And I think you were particularly upset about not being in a loop and more frequently about what was going on.
Which is why I read them regularly.
I proposed writing in the first place. So, you know, this is something, this is, uh. You know, if it's helpful, then great. But I'm also not gonna waste the, the staff's time on something that ends up just being another pile of piece of paper.
But this isn't the only thing you had them keep from us, and I know because I had to back people into a corner to get the information necessary. To put it on agendas, the moratorium was one of them.
So what else are you accusing me of now? Is that the line?
I'm saying that you have withheld information.
Without any proof again, huh? Nice, classic.
I have proof, I backed people into a corner to get them.
Classic.
The, the moratorium, the interim zoning law.
Accuse me of doing my job badly or, I don't know.
Not being bad.
Holding information from us, just be a team player. All I want is to be a team, Jason. I wanna work together, I wanna be included in things. I wanna not have to ask to be told about a meeting that. I should be involved in, cause I'm working with all the same people on these things. This, this is all I want is to be a team. And I feel like you are refusing to do so, and I have to talk to you about this. I have to talk to you about this here, because there's no other place for me to talk to you about this, Jason. And now, and now you're gonna walk out, because you don't want to talk to me about this, because you cannot talk to me about this.
Ariana, I walk out.
Jason, I tried to talk to you at other times, you leave.
Very personal, and that's why I'm not talking about this.
I am not making this personal ou- outside of what you have already made personal. You have blocked my cell phone number. What am I supposed to do?
You call me out on that, Mike, like you did before.
I do. I do.
I cannot believe that you and Brian think this is appropriate behavior for a village board meeting, this is.
Jason, if you would talk to me or return my phone calls any other time, then I wouldn't have to do this on public.
So this, you did do this on public in order to back me into a corner, as you put it, yes?
Because I, because I want, because I've tried every other way, Jason. I've talked to you about this personally many times.
You really need to stop talking, cause this is just embarrassing.
I'm embarrassed, except for you.
Items on the executive.
Enjoy, Sally, have fun. If you can get them to grow up and do their jobs, then maybe I'll pay more off.
If you could do this every week and just at the beginning of the meetings, it'd be much better for everyone. I wish you'd be mad. Just saying.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say for the record on the amount, uh, about the, the department head reports, that every department head report that I get, I read.
I do too.
Yeah.
So.
It's my, it's my only comment.
Yeah, I mean, look.
As I said earlier, and I will say again, I. Ran. And I think I can speak for both Stuart and myself, since we ran together. We ran because we care about this village and we wanna get village business done.
Agreed.
And I am very, very concerned. That our interpersonal problems at the board level are seeping way down. To all of our staff.
Well, yes.
Are feeling very uncomfortable.
I'm sure.
In the position that they are being put. Through no fault of theirs.
Oh, yeah.
But certainly through the fault of this board, and we've gotta solve this problem. Because we have very, very good employees working for us. And they don't deserve to feel.
I agree completely, and, and I feel like the public doesn't deserve to watch us do this.
And I'm sorry to be facetious on camera and act in that way, because it's not the way I want to act, but when, when someone.
Talk about this on camera.
I literally pushed that and when someone talks and lies, I mean, look, like, there's only so much that I can take.
Please don't use the word lie.
I'm sorry, okay.
Misconstrue, she misunderstands what you said.
Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not communicating in the best way possible.
None of us communicate well, I mean, you know, we all try. I think we try to communicate well and if, and we always provide the latitude if one of us misunderstood. That they could come back and say, what you mean?
For the most part.
And that is the way we wanna function.
Absolutely.
And so, I'm going to ask for a motion to move to executive session for the purposes of litigation.
And labor, there's a labor discussion as well.
Um, a, a contractual.
A labor of discussion.
Okay, labor discussion on a contractual matter, um. And the employee history of an individual.
I'll second that, alright.
Alright, alright.
Aye, and I'm inviting our attorney.
Yes, you might want to go always, always welcome.